Um, city clerk, let me know when we're ready to go, please.
We are ready to go.
Okay. For a second for Mr. Medina. I can hear the water, he's back. Okay. Um, alright, that's fine, perfect timing. Alright, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting on February the 9th, 2020. Calling this meeting to order, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Um, once if I could, uh, ask all of council, uh, if able to stand, if not, if you would sit and jointly together, uh, lead in the pledge.
I budge allegiance, I'll join in. Can't hear anybody.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and I know everybody was being good about keeping their mic off. There was no background noise, sorry about that. Um, thank you. What we are gonna do at this time, we will move on to item number three. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individually allowed three minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized as due to state law. And city clerk, I know we have some folks, and if you would please be so kind to take over and bring them in.
Yes, first we have Bo Smith, just one moment while I bring you in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you, I just wanted to come tonight and report on the overpasses going through San Bruno. And the CalTrains has not taken any action at this point to clean them up. Um, I went out and saw them today. There are the overpasses at, you know, the 280 and the 380 at El Camino and the 101, but the one I went and visited today was the 280 at El Camino. And, um, I'd just like to encourage the city to, you know, pursue, you know, negotiations with CalTrains, I guess we've been trying to do that for years. I really think we should sue them. Um, and if we don't sue them, like, um, Councilwoman, um, Mason suggested last week of a maintenance contract that evidently nobody on the peninsula has a maintenance contract with, that we be the first, that they pay us money to take care of cleaning up these on-ramps and off-ramps. They're absolutely atrocious. It's sad, you know, it's really, really sad. You know, how we communicate with each other as, you know, citizens to the council and the city matters. And it just seems that the voice of the people that wanna, you know, not live in this squalor are not being heard. That we speak and we ask for action and nothing happens. And it creates such a sense of apathy and hopelessness. And, um, you know, to be sort of to be okay with this litter and just drive by it like it's, you know, just part of daily living. It's really a sad state of affairs for us. And I don't think we realize the, the impact it has on us as a society. Um, you know, that we're, our children are seeing this, where it's, you know, it's just gonna be like a normal thing to have litter strewn around all the time. It's just not good for us. And, um, I'm willing to do whatever I can do to help the city and carry forward, you know, doing some action-taking on these state properties. So, my time's coming to a close. And, um, I really hope you do something. I, I really hope you take some action and, and lead us. And, um, clean up these, clean up these overpasses and underpasses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next we have Steven Seymour.
Hi, it's Sandra Perez-Vargas. Um, I hope you guys are all doing well tonight. Um, first, I'd like to request that the contract amendment for the city manager be pulled, uh, pulled from the consent calendar for explanation.
Excuse me, excuse me, that's on the agenda and that can be addressed at that time?
Okay, thank you for letting me know that, I wasn't sure. And second, I, uh, also, I wanna echo what, uh, Bo said about the cleanliness of our city. I've been going around taking a lot of pictures of areas that we've cleaned up, some are dirty again. But especially when you're taking 380 onto El Camino. Um, I took pictures back in December, I think the 20th, reported it to CalTrains, and I received the automatic, we've received your report, but since then, there's nothing. And the question is, by residents, do we just accept nothing? Or do we proceed and, um, ask that they do something? And if not, do we do it and then bill them? I know the city has been afraid of getting sued and crossing over to their property line, and I completely get that. But what I don't get is just allowing it to happen and happen and happen. So if you guys can provide us any guidance on this, I mean, we're doing the best we can as residents. And I agree with Bo. I mean, if they're not maintaining their property, we should sue them. It's plain and simple, either, you know, take, take responsibility. And the same is true of the businesses in town. I mean, but they're not taking care of their properties. There's, there's, uh, parking lots on San Mateo Avenue that are not taken care of. Uh, businesses that are just allowing the overflow of garbage. And there's a place up the street from my house, their parking lot backs up into the residential area. And it's, it's an open dumping site with food. And it's just not respectful to, um, our community. And, um, the same businesses are reported over and over year after year. And not just to the S V responds or calling in, but also, you know, to the health department, but there just seems to be no accountability at any turn. So I would love to see us raise our standards in San Bruno. And, you know, saying enough already, you know, we, we deserve to have a decent quality of life. And that includes not being assaulted by garbage at every turn. And, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, next speaker, please.
So, I
Next speaker is Paul Wapinski.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hey, uh, good evening, I received my notice for the storm drainage and flood protection, uh, fee, um, in the mail. And there's some things that aren't very clear in it. Uh, I already have a San Bruno storm fee, national pollutant discharge elimination, uh, fee on my bill, on my property tax bill. So what's the difference between this and what's being proposed in the current, uh, N P D E money? And what is that used for that, uh, is not being, gonna be used for the, uh, proposed fee? And the bottom line is, is the fee that's being added to my property tax bill, um, gonna be included in my assessment? And are the proposed yearly increases only applied to the fee that's being proposed? Or is it gonna be on my total assessed value? And I'd like those questions answered sometime before, I know you're gonna have a meeting on it, but that would be something that, uh, I'd like to have answered for everybody, cause it's not clear in the, uh, document that was sent to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Seopra Linden.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, my name is Seopra Linden, and I'm here on behalf of the Cappuccino High School Environmental Club to address the concern we have for San Bruno's responsibility in fighting the ongoing climate crisis. It's evident that climate change is both a global and local crisis. And San Bruno is a city that will see a lot of damage if no action is taken soon. Widespread climate-related impacts are already affecting things like water, energy, ecosystems, and health, and are expected to increase without action. A complication that will be particularly harmful to San Bruno is damage from flooding, especially in neighborhoods around the airport and near the bay. It should be the city's responsibility to ensure its future residents won't have to deal with the catastrophes that will likely take place. And with that, the promise that the city can remain a place that people will want to move to, along with environmental leadership that we currently lack. It's my understanding that three San Bruno residents approached the city council asking for the creation of an environmental sustainability commission, similar to that of many other cities. Having a commission like that would bring the city one step closer to planning and initiating a climate action plan, which is something that every single city in San Mateo County has adopted except for San Bruno. Many of our neighboring cities' climate action plans include agendas and proposals aimed at tackling issues such as greenhouse gas emissions, water conservation, waste management, and transportation emissions. They have and are funding public outreach on the importance of conserving energy, recycling, and other issues that residents can address themselves. Many cities are mandating recycling and food composting within local businesses and setting out to install a more accessible electric vehicle charging infrastructure. They are actively updating and continuously addressing their plans to ensure that the community is reaching its goals and staying in line with their plans and the progress the county expects. San Bruno has addressed the issues of flooding and conservation in the general plan. But the effort has not expanded beyond that. This lack of action tells our residents and those residing within San Mateo County that we are not a city willing to put in the work necessary to tackle climate change. As concerned young residents of San Bruno, we ask that a statement on the importance of needed action and a plan should be created to reassure the population of San Bruno that this city will remain a safe and enjoyable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be Tim O'Brien.
Hi, good evening, it's actually Reina.
Hi, Reina, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I wanna actually make a comment and also an observa- an observation. I have learned that, uh, the city conducts some special, uh, council meetings, three to five on Fridays. And now, the, the one that I was aware of is on January 22nd. I believe that that time is not workable for a lot of people that are, that actually work. So if you can actually accommodate some of us, I would like to participate in those. However, I, I'm at work, so I can't participate. And also, you need to post it on nextdoor.com or, you know, or San Bruno Now or other, you know, Facebook social media, so people are aware of, um, these meetings. So they can provide feedback of what you're discussing during those, um, meetings. That's one. Another thing is, um, I, um, basically very disappointed how much trash I see in front of apartment buildings. Especially of tenants when they move out. They don't have the courtesy to call basically a recology and just leave their items on the street, and it looks appalling how a city is being trashed when people move out. And I think we need to put the burden or find the landlords accountable to take care of these items. I don't think the city should be the one, um, uh, basically, what I'm trying to say, the city, they taking care of the financial, financial burden to get rid of, discard these items. So it is, I see mattress, chairs, items that the landlords should be uh, responsible to take care of. And I wanna see a proactive, um, uh, uh, project from the city to put on landlords. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Teri Chavez.
There you are. Hi, Teri, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. I'm using a different computer. Um, I wanna thank the other, um, residents that commented on, on, on the trash. Um, Bo and, um, Sandra and Reina. Because I know that trash around the city was a huge problem. And I know, I know at the last city council meeting, you know, I, a lot of us thanked everybody who stepped up and volunteered to, to help out with, with picking up the trash and cleaning certain neighborhoods. I know there's a once-a-month, um, meeting to clean. I just wanted to mention, um, I'm not sure if any of that, I know I've heard folks mention it's CalTran property. I'm not sure if any of the property is actually San Mateo County property, because I'm looking at, um, that property tax dollar the city council presented in August 2019, that's like my go-to little property tax dollar. The city of San Bruno only receives 15 cents out of every tax dollar. Uh, San Mateo County receives 26 cents out of every property tax dollar. That's almost, it's not quite double, but it's almost double from what, from the amount that the city of San Bruno receives from the property taxes. And so I'm just wanted to, to mention that if, if there's any property that's owned by the county, I, I think we should hold them accountable. They are receiving, almost, they're receiving 26% of all of our property tax dollars and, and, um, I think we need to, um, help hold the county responsible for the areas that they own. Uh, thank you for, um, allowing me to comment, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Benjamin Fong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Alright. Hi, my name is Benjamin Fong, and I am speaking on behalf of the Cappuccino Environmental Club. Our club is focused on issues of climate change and any methods to lessen it. And one of the main issues that we want to address is lessening the use of plastics. A lot of local stores, restaurants, and other business, businesses have to resort to using plastic bags, utensils, containers, and others as means to save cost. However, plastics contribute to large quantities of waste and is a contributing factor to health hazards. You know, I participated in the cleanup last month, and the vast majority of the, uh, trash that I picked up was plastic. Now, according to UNenvironment.org, if current trends continue, our oceans could contain more plastics than fish by 2050. They also inform that by clogging sewers and providing breeding grounds for mosquitoes and pests, and also plastic waste, especially plastic bags, this can increase the transmission of vector-borne diseases. Now, this is very shocking to us at Cappuccino Environmental Club, because we care what goes on in our city, and we want to see change implemented. We also want to do our part to see San Bruno be environmentally friendly and take a stand against plastics. Plastic use is a global issue. However, we can start small, implement local changes, and do our part to ensure that we all live in a clean and healthy environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please.
Uh, next speaker is Michaela Santos Stevenson.
Alright, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Uh, hi, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michaela Santos Stevenson, and I'm the third and final member here to speak on account of Cappuccino Environmental Club. Recently, there was a cleanup organized by Cleaning San Bruno Now, and from what I know, the city provided tools and recology provided trashcans and disposal service. We'd like to thank all those mentioned, as well as the three councilmembers who attended the cleanup to help. Volunteer opportunities such as this are exactly what we wanna see more of in San Bruno moving forward. More frequent cleanups targeting areas in the city where trash is especially problematic could do a lot of good, such as by the reservoir and other delicate wildlife areas. However, there are other opportunities for volunteer work as well. Cleaning storm drains so that the trash does not end up washing out into the bay, for example, is something that we could get started on now. And if organized well, we could do so very efficiently. Projects that we can begin soon include planting plants and trees that are native to the area. As with all plants, they would assist with erosion control, carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, and native plants would be able to grow healthier and stronger, doing more good in the long run. It's also worth noting that this would be healthier for the ecosystem because native animals are more at home with those plants. More long-term projects that can be worked on can be installing rainwater collection systems to reduce water usage. And although the water collected may not be the safest to drink without treatment, it's perfectly usable for maintaining landscaping and watering plants. That said, there are things that people can do at home rather than go outside. For example, EcoBricks. EcoBricks are plastic bottles packed tightly with used plastic to make a reusable building block. They're used for building homes, gardens, furniture, and a lot more. You can pack a lot of plastic into one plastic bottle, and packing, packing your bottles takes a lot less time than one might think, especially if you do it while idly watching a TV show or any other media you enjoy. EcoBricks.org has a lot more information on this, but essentially, through that organization, you can drop off your completed EcoBricks at one of their designated locations listed on their site to be sent off for use in projects where needed. Communities can also practice EcoBricking for their own use, such as in community gardens. And if this practice were introduced to and implemented by San Bruno's residents, we can prevent a significant amount of plastic from ending up loose in the environment while simultaneously using these reusable building blocks for green projects and doing more good than we could have with just recycling. We have lots of other ideas and projects in mind, and we at Cappuccino Environmental Club are very interested in collaborating with you all at San Bruno City Council on environmental issues going forward. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Steven Seymour.
Yeah, it really is me this time. Uh, I would like to first commend the last speaker and Benjamin and Seopra uh, for their interest in the environment. It really is wonderful to hear, uh, students in our town, um, raise these important issues. And I know there have been many who have brought these things forward, but it seems like the frequency of speakers that are now asking our city to do something about the environment is, is coming faster and harder in recent months. So I'd really like to thank them, and I'd also like to thank them for joining the cleanup that, that, uh, the community had last month. Um, I wanna take this time to let everyone know that we are doing another cleanup. And that cleanup will be on Sa- Saturday, the 20th of this month at 10 o'clock. And it'll take place in the, what will start in the CalTran parking lot. And we'll be cleaning, uh, areas in the avenues and along Huntington. Uh, so, we had a wonderful cleanup last time, it's great to hear some speakers talk about it this evening. Uh, and we expect this next one, uh, to be equally as successful as the last. Uh, and I'd just like to invite everyone out there. Um, the city was gracious and loaned us pickers and, uh, vests and helped pick up, uh, some of the garbage that we picked up. And, uh, the city will be helping us again, uh, this time around. And it's a great event where you can get out and meet people that you haven't met before, who are like-minded, who'd like to see our city, uh, cleaned and less garbage on the ground. It seems like a lot of people, public comments tonight spoke about the same thing. So if you wanna make a dent in the garbage that you see, come join us. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Tong.
Hello?
Hello, Jeffrey, whenever you're ready.
I just wanted to reiterate my last, uh, uh, request at the last, uh, city council meeting to have the, uh, city council, um, acknowledge the severity of climate change and to create an environmental sustainability, uh, commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see we have our last speaker up, uh, please go ahead.
Yes, last speaker is Riley Gibbons.
Hello?
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Alright, thank you. Hello, everyone. Um, I'd like to just talk about a couple of things real quick. Cleaning is one of them, everybody pretty much touched on that. And I think it is in our best interest as a member of Cleaning San Bruno Now to associate ourselves with Cappuccino's Environmental Club. I think, um, having a lot of young people who are, um, worried about the environment, wanting to get involved is extremely beneficial to our city, especially now with, um, the cleanups getting larger and larger. So that'll be something the city can look forward to, is a very efficient, larger group of, uh, cleaning. And like had Steven had mentioned, there's going to be another cleanup, January 20th. I highly recommend everybody come out, it's a great time. You're cleaning the city, and it feels good for yourself. Um, yes, and then transitioning to the other topic regarding marijuana. I would just like to know if anything has been progressed or anything has been talked about? Because recently, Burlingame is not wasting any time, clearly. They're already accepting businesses and delivery, uh, methods. So I think San Bruno should really consider moving forward on this and not waiting, because before you know it, it's, it's gonna be too late. If Burlingame opens up before us, which it seems like they will, San Bruno will be set back another 10 years, and it'll just be too much trouble. So, please consider it. The, the city needs it, we all need it, and it's extremely beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you everyone for being here tonight and, and speaking and, uh, sharing with us your thoughts. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number four, which is announcements and presentations. And just for council and for, uh, the viewing, uh, public, once we are concluded with announcements and presentations, I'm going to move under conduct of business, move up item six B as in boy. And that's the resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rate increase. Uh, reason for that is we have two folks, they're, uh, you know, one who's the acting, or not acting, but two consultants, um, one from the city for finance and another for this topic. And obviously, the longer they sit and wait, that, that costs the city money. So in order to ensure that we get that taken care of quickly, and, uh, wish them thanks once they're concluded, I'm gonna move that up. Want to give everybody a heads up to that. With that, let's move on to, uh, item A. Update on COVID-19 response efforts. Jennifer Dianos.
Yes, thank you, mayor, we're just pulling up the presentation now. Um, good evening, mayor and members of the city council, and my name is Jennifer Dianos, and I'm the assistant to the city manager. And here this evening to provide you a COVID-19 update on behalf of the AOC Public Information Team. This evening, I will go over our current status, um, our county statistics, testing and vaccine information, and a short preview of a few virtual programs the city is offering. I will be available for questions at the end of the presentation. San Mateo County remains in the purple or the widespread tier of the blueprint for a safer economy. This status has not changed since the last update to you last month. As you can see on the screen, our county metrics are listed by the state and were updated earlier today. Our adjusted case rate is currently at 15.4, a positivity rate of 3.8, and a health equity quartile positivity rate at 6.5. These represent the criteria for movement within the tiers of the blueprint. There's a lot of information on the screen, um, I realize that, but I did wanna show you uh, where we are versus what is required for us to move to the next tier. So looking at this criteria, we currently need two of the three categories to move to the lower tier. However, all three must be met before moving, thus we remain at the, uh, widespread level. Regards to local statistics, for San Mateo County, there are 37,139 total cases in the county and a total of 447 deaths. The graph titled Cases by Episode Date in the middle of the screen demonstrates a decline in new cases, but that does not mean to let your guard down, so please continue to wear your mask, stay a distance, and wash your hands. In San Bruno, there are a total of 2,057 cases reported as of February 4th. And you can see by the shading on the map that it's relative within the county. And lastly, I've included a newer dashboard that was set up by the county. I think that the last report out included this information as well. It has data related to vaccinations within our county. So currently, there are 84,783 vaccinated, and just under 20,000 that have completed the entire series. Um, to the right of the screen, you'll see the very distribution providers in our area. Um, and there's both Pfizer and Moderna- And there's both Pfizer and Moderna vaccines that are being administered. Before I go into a little bit more about vaccines, I want to mention that the county has transitioned their COVID testing sites to locations other than San Mateo County Event Center, which has held it for several months now. And one of those locations is located in San Bruno. The site that was previously used as a mobile testing site every other week is now offering drive-through testing. That testing is offered Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the location is Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints located at 975 St. Lane. This test is for adults and children ages five and older. Oops, I got hit myself there. And appointments are required. The appointment link is on the screen. It's A V E L L I N O C O V two dot com, which is a mouthful, but you can also link to it through the county site and that's S M C gov dot org forward slash testing. The city continues to also partner with the county to offer local self-administered tests on Saturday, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's currently scheduled through the end of February and scheduling is reevaluated on a monthly basis by our EOC team. We're currently serving a range from about 150 to 200 people each Saturday and we've gotten up to 350 on one of those weekends. The site is located at 530 Huntington and is also open for adults and children ages five and older. You can link to the schedule and to make an appointment by visiting sanbruno.ca.gov/LocalTesting. For the self-administered test, it is important to know that test takers should not eat, drink, or smoke 20 minutes prior to taking the test as it may affect the results. And here, I'm hoping that most of our residents and community members are already signed up for the city manager's A newsletter and if not, please subscribe on our website. But in the most recent addition, there was an update on vaccines. The primary question everyone seems to be asking is when and where can I be vaccinated? The answer can vary depending on personal circumstances, including age and insurance. However, most residents will receive their vaccine from their primary care provider as soon as they're eligible to and supply allows. Eligibility is set by federal and state guidelines to ensure safe and equitable distribution. To be notified when you're eligible to receive the vaccine, there are a couple of different tools to use. And I'm not sure that the totals cross one another at this time. And so the best recommendation is to sign up or use all of them just to ensure that you're notified timely because you wouldn't want to miss the opportunity. So first is the state notification system, which is called MyTurn. You can sign up at myturn.ca.gov. The county has also established a notification system, which I've linked in the presentation. The direct link is very long, so I'm not going to read it out loud, but I do recommend that you go to the county health site. That's S M C health dot org forward slash COVID vaccine. And on that link, you'll find a direct link to the notification system as well as other valuable information on this process. The county has provided information on the current distribution of vaccinations as of February 5. And you'll see that in the graphic here on the slide. This includes Phase 1A, the categories of healthcare workers and long-term care residents. It's approximately 50,000 individuals. And Phase 1B for adults 75 and over, 65 and over, residents in vulnerable communities, first responders, food and agriculture, teachers and school staff, and that's approximately 167 individuals there. These numbers are also included in the above vaccination dashboard that we just looked at. The county remains committed to ensuring those that want the vaccine will receive the vaccine when they're eligible. So this process is all contingent on vaccine availability and can change with very short notice. So it's important to check with your provider frequently and sign up for the notifications. Large vaccination sites in our region are operating when a large amount of doses are available. So be sure to sign up so you're alerted timely. The county has also put together a data page that shows how many residents in the community are vaccinated. In San Bruno, there's just under 4,500 individuals that have been vaccinated. But remember, even though you receive a shot or know somebody that has, it's important to continue to take the precautionary measures to prevent the spread of COVID. So wear your mask in public, keep your distance, and wash your hands. Next, I'll go over a few recreational activities for you and your family. City playgrounds remain open with modifications. There is signage located at parks and in the other play structures as a reminder to play safe, plan ahead, and know when to stay home. If you or anyone in your family is feeling under the weather, please stay home. Basketball courts, tennis courts, the dog park, public restrooms, and practice play on athletic fields all remain open. That has not changed. However, picnic sites, drinking fountains, indoor facilities, rentals, competitive play on the athletic fields are all not allowed. These are reviewed by our EOC team regularly to ensure safety compliance for our community. And since many are at home and may not be comfortable out at the parks, we do offer March Rec in a Bag. This includes themed crafts that can keep your family busy. Each bag is $20 and includes instructions and supplies for five projects that you can do safely at home. You can register online at sanbruno.ca.gov/RecSignup. Our library team is offering Stories of My People with Kirk Waller, an award-winning storyteller. Kirk Waller will virtually share African and African-American folk tale legend and history through music, movement, and singing. Pre-registration is required for this library event and it's available online at appointment.sanbrunolibrary.org. And as you know, our small businesses help make our community, our character, and our vitality. So we want to help support them. So shop local, eat local, support our local businesses at any opportunity that you can. And lastly, please make sure to stay connected. Sign up for emergency notifications through S M C Alert and follow us on social media. All are linked on the slide and can also be found on our website. That concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for your report. And I'm going to turn now for questions and Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you for that report, Jennifer. A lot of information there. I mean, most importantly, everybody continue to be safe. The question I have for staff is for some clarity regarding parking enforcement, street sweeping, and 72-hour enforcement. That is now being enforced. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, that has come up and obviously it has a gamut of people liking that it was suspended, people not liking it, but city staff, can you please clarify?
Yes, sure. Councilmember Medina, city council and community members. Councilmember Medina is correct. The city has resumed enforcement of ticketing as well as street sweeping enforcement during the street sweeping days in both sides of the community. And so we do want cars moved and we are also now enforcing the 72-hour rule.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
So I had a question about violations of the rules. And I got an email over the weekend from a resident who saw a large gathering in city park where people, it was a large group, people weren't wearing masks. And I was wondering if there was any advice to the public about, you know, is the city enforcing? Is that something that they should be reporting? Or is it something that we should notify the county about? Obviously, by the time they were to do something about it, the people would probably be gone. So I'm just wondering if there's any advice on how to handle those situations.
Councilmember Salazar, one of the most difficult things to enforce are the mask rules in our parks because there is an exemption on wearing a mask when exercising. And so people using our parks are taking recreational activities. Even walking can do so without masks. So we do routinely receive those calls and provide that information. The county does have a reporting mechanism for businesses that people observe violating the health and safety orders. And that information has been provided and is on the city's website and you can link directly to that from the city's homepage.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the difficulty in enforcing some of those things and distinguishing which activities are which. So I appreciate all the information on the report and well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you for the report. Just echoing Councilmember Salazar, I thought at one point we had talked about putting some signs up at the park. I know the city of San Mateo has signs up at their parks and they do require masks to be worn at their parks. And in addition, it says you must maintain a six-foot distance. So I don't know if that's an ordinance. Then maybe the city manager would have to respond, whether, I mean, the city attorney, whether that's an ordinance that San Mateo has enacted. But I was recently at a San Mateo park and the signs were very evident and they were very clear all over the park.
So. Go ahead, city manager.
So Councilmember Mason, you're exactly correct. We have ordered additional signage for the parks. We expect them to arrive today and we will put additional signage at all parks. There is existing signage at our play structures and at some of the entrances to parks. And taking suggestions from the community and the council, we did order additional signs and they have just have not arrived yet.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we thank you again, staff. And we'll move on to item B, receive update from San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I believe we're going to have a representative from the district. And I don't know the title, so I apologize. Mr. Stevenson, please, the floor is yours.
All right, I'm going to share my screen here. Let's see here. All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so my name is Casey Stevenson and I work for San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control. I'm the field supervisor. I was asked to come here and kind of just discuss district services by our, we have a board of trustees, so our trustee for San Bruno, Robert Riegel, asked me to come here today and just kind of talk about our district services and what we provide to the city of San Bruno and San Mateo County. So our district has been around since 1916. We've been protecting public health since then. Kind of our mission, you know, we try to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of San Mateo County through a planned program to monitor and reduce mosquitoes and other vectors. We are an independent special district funded by property tax and special assessments. So if you look at your property tax bill, you will see us on there. All services we provide add no charge to residents of San Mateo County. Just kind of a few things that we do at our district, a brief overview. Obviously, our bread and butter is mosquitoes. We do tons of inspections and treatments all over San Mateo County and in San Bruno. Some of the few other things we do that people might not know about, we do yellow jacket and wasp removal. These usually start popping up in about May and usually go all the way into October. So if someone has a yellow jacket or wasp nest on their property, please give us a call. And another thing we do, we do a lot of rodent inspections. We do those for cities, we do them for residential properties. And for that, we're kind of just going out to people's properties and kind of looking. They might think rats are getting in some out. So we'll kind of assess their property and give them a nice inspection report and kind of be like, hey, this is what you can do to make your property less attractive to rodents. Like I said, we do have tons of mosquito treatments. So this is kind of a comparison of what we've done the last four years in San Mateo County. And it stays relatively the same over the years. You know, we do tons of site visits. So in 2020, we did about 28,000 site visits. And during those site visits of those, we treated about 9,500 sites. In San Mateo County, we have about 8,500 potential mosquito breeding sites that we look after, basically. Just in comparison, you know, in 2010, our staff performed about 22,000 mosquito treatments. And you see in 2020, we did about 9,500 mosquito treatments. We've kind of lowered our mosquito treatments over time and one of the reasons was we put an increased emphasis on educating property owners about the importance of eliminating mosquito habitats. So, you know, kind of just telling, hey, you know, this container here that holds water, can breed mosquitoes, can cause a lot of issues for your neighbors, let alone yourself. So I think we've been able to educate the public about the potential dangers of mosquitoes and just what a nuisance it is, actually. And then over time, when I started doing mosquito control in 2008, the products we use to control the juvenile mosquitoes would only last about four to six weeks. But currently today, we have products that can last up to five months in the specific water source that we're treating. So that's kind of reduced the amount of treatments we had to do over time. And since our district has become, you know, we've, a lot more people know about us now. We've had a high volume of service calls have increased over time. So this extra time frees us up to respond to a service call within 24 to 48 hours. So if you call our district on a Monday night saying you have a mosquito breeding or you think there's mosquitoes biting you, we'll be coming out the next day. It also allows staff to conduct more surveillance and control and more mosquitoes in more areas of San Mateo County. So, you know, we're trying to reach everywhere in the county, basically. And this helps us control West Nile virus and any invasive species of mosquitoes that might enter our county, such as the 80s Aegypti. Just a little background on San Bruno, kind of what we do in this area for mosquito control. We have about 200 actively monitored mosquito, potential mosquito breeding sites that we monitor regularly. And in 2020, we had about 61 service calls. This is kind of just a map of the city of San Bruno. Kind of, it shows the dispersion of our mosquito sites. So you can see they range all the way from 101 all the way up to Highway 35. So they're pretty evenly distributed throughout that area. Some of the sites we come across, if we're at residential properties, are usually like an abandoned fish pond, which we can put mosquito fish in and they would control the mosquito larva. And other things, you know, find random containers on people's properties that after the rainy season, people might not know about, that can breed tons of the mosquitoes also. These are things we like to educate the public about on how they can control the mosquitoes. We also have a lot of natural sources in San Bruno and we call them seasonal impound. So these are things that fill in with rainwater. And if that water sits there long enough, they can tend to breed mosquitoes also. And, you know, we are in an urban environment, so a lot of these natural areas back up the neighborhoods. And so if these mosquitoes go off, it can cause a real problem for these neighborhoods. And then talking municipal-wise, you know, a lot of storm drains all throughout the county can breed mosquitoes, especially the specific mosquito that can transmit West Nile virus. So we have a seasonal crew completely dedicated to treating all the storm drains in San Mateo County during the summertime. In one month, all eight of them can treat up to between 50 and 60,000 catch bases in a month. Like I said, back to service requests, you know, it's a 24 to 48 hour response time. We do get a lot of mosquito calls, a lot of rodent calls, where we're just doing inspections and advising the residents on how to make their properties less attractive to them. We collect dead birds, so that's a big thing. Please, if you find a dead bird, call us and we'll come pick up the dead bird. And that's one of our ways of testing for West Nile virus in San Mateo County. And also, we do a lot of insect identification. So if you have a bug on your property and you're not sure what it is, you call us and we can come pick it up. You can email us a photograph of it and we can assess your situation and just give you more information about that insect. Briefly, just kind of, this is a service request by city. I just really want to focus on San Bruno and kind of the most requests we get for the city of San Bruno are about mosquitoes. In 2020, we had 14 mosquito calls. We had 12 standing water calls. So that's kind of like a see something, say something. You know, if there's any stagnant water anywhere, it has the potential to breed mosquitoes. So please give us a call if you see something like that. And then yellow jacket calls, you know. If you ever stepped on a yellow jacket or been stung by a yellow jacket, it doesn't feel good. You know, and we do that to protect the public. So please give us a call if you see any of these things on here. And kind of another little distribution map of all of our service requests in the city of San Bruno for the year 2020. You see, once again, they're pretty evenly distributed. And just kind of an example of some of the things we see when we're doing inspection of residential properties. This is obviously an extreme case, but there's probably like 30 containers here and they're all holding. This is obviously an extreme case, but there's probably like thirty containers here and they're all holding water. If these were to go left untended, untreated, not dumped out, they could produce thousands of mosquitoes that would not only affect this property owner, but is also affecting the surrounding neighbors, which could make them really upset. So, you know, dump it out if you got it. Also, wonder, water under the house, you know, how many people really ever go under their house to look underneath it? But we find this fairly often in multiple cities throughout San Mateo County. So when a, some properties, the ground settles and then these pipes kind of shear and break and cause a leak. And over time, this water accumulates and this can produce millions of mosquitoes. So, you know, periodically look under your house if you're noticing mosquitoes, just give us a call, you know. We're gonna go house to house until we find a problem. We don't stop. And then once again, creeks, creeks can over time and in the summer, you know, when they tend to slow down, they can produce mosquitoes. So as a district, we do a lot of legwork in the early spring. We trim these creeks out and make sure there's no blockage of water so the water can continuously flow. So that kind of reduces the amount of larviciding material or pesticide we have to put in this water during the summertime when there are pockets of it. And then kind of one of the largest natural areas in San Bruno, it kind of spans Millbury and San Bruno is Mills Field. And our technician for the city, he does tons of control work out here. There's about thirty two to forty acres of tulip ponds that can breed mosquitoes and in the summertime, basically, and in the wintertime. So he usually starts in January and he's out here every single week checking all of these areas to see if mosquitoes are being produced. This is a very sensitive habitat and it's very hard to access for it, as you can see with these pictures here. You can see the cattail ponds, they're completely overgrown. So one of the ways we treat these, starting in July, we bring a helicopter in that drops a, a dry larviciding material directly into the water that can control the mosquitoes for up to a month. So we do that monthly, starting in July, August, September, October, and that helps control the mosquitoes. And then they do, once they get colder, they do slow down their growth process. Sometimes, you know, this was this summer twenty twenty, that's me with the hose right there, spraying, spraying a liquid larvicide into the tulip ponds. As the summer progresses in Mills Field, stuff, things do dry up. So it's not fiscally responsible to bring out a helicopter. That's a pretty expensive treatment for only five acres of property when before we were treating thirty two acres. So we have some pretty heavy equipment that we can bring out and drive safely down the road through Mills Field and treat this accordingly. So that's pretty much it for my talk. Like I said, I thank you for having me here. This is kind of an example of us spraying. And I would like to thank our trustee for setting this up. And if you guys have, feel free to have any questions, our email address is there and our district phone number. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson, for your report. And if you could stop sharing your screen and thank you, sir. Any questions? I see Councilmember Hamilton.
Not a question, just a brief comment. I had no idea the breadth of, of services that was, that's being provided by the mosquito and vector control district. So I really appreciate this, this presentation and encourage the residents in attendance to use the services that you described. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mason.
I, I just wanted to thank you for responding to the email with, there were a number of questions that had been raised. And I just wanted to thank you for that. And I also want to thank you for your passion. Who knew mosquitoes could be so exciting? So thank you.
I love my job, so.
It shows. And, and I want to say, and I know obviously under COVID times, there is not the ability. But I believe Councilmember Salazar has been, as well as I, we, you go by Rollins Road, they had an open house. It was very informative and you could see the various animals, you could see the equipment that's used. And I will tell you, you can drive by it, maybe not even know it's there. But when you go inside and see all that is done and act and how it operates, it's amazing. And I know they allow, once we get out of this, and we will, they do allow folks to come by, visit and do open houses. And I would encourage anybody who hasn't done that, you would even learn much more about what, what they offer and what they do. So, Mr. Stevenson, go ahead, sir.
Oh yeah, I was just gonna say thank you for that. You know, we have a great website also that you guys can check out in the meantime during this COVID times. But yeah, definitely, please come out whenever. Our district's always open, eight to four thirty, Monday through Friday, except in COVID time.
Yes, but thank you again. Please pass on our thanks and also take this opportunity, as you mentioned, your board, our board member, you, Robert, who makes sure on an annual basis, we kept, we keep informed and we know what's going on. And so we appreciate and please pass on our thanks to everybody there that does the work they do.
Thank you, sir.
All right, enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, you too.
All right, we're gonna move on to item C under announcements and presentations. Receive presentation on city utility billing process. City manager.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers and member of the public. I'm here tonight to provide a presentation that's titled Understanding San Bruno's Utility Bills. So I'm here tonight in two capacities, one as your city manager, but also as your interim finance director until we fill that position, which should be shortly. So since, what the city council knows is that since we launched our effort to improve deficiencies in our stormwater system, we've had a spike in questions about some of our other utilities. And so we're here tonight to talk about those utilities that we bill for on a regular basis, a bi-monthly basis. And so those are water, sewer and trash. Stormwater, as we all know, is on the annual property tax. So our objective for tonight is to provide the city council and the community with an overview of the city's bi-monthly utility billing process, thereby providing an answer to one of the commonly asked questions that I know you receive and that we receive here, which is why do I receive such a large utility bill from the city of San Bruno every two months? We get that question and so let's pull back the covers a little bit and attack that. And so let me also say, tonight is not an in-depth presentation about our utility rates and the structures. We're really talking about the utility billing process, but we'll also have some comparisons. And so the agenda for this presentation is structured as follows. We'll have a background, we'll talk about the bi-monthly bill, we'll see a few sample bills. We'll see a billing process comparison with a lot of, with a few of our neighboring jurisdictions. And then we'll look at a few rate comparisons and then I'll provide a summary. So launching into the background, our finance department here in the city of San Bruno administers a bi-monthly billing process for water, sewer and trash services. That is both sending paper bills and paperless bills approximately, we, we have for all three of those utilities, approximately fifteen thousand individual customer accounts. Our public works department is the department that operates and maintains our water and sewer enterprises. And recology is our contract provider for residential and commercial waste and recycling services. But we do deal on their behalf as per the city's contract with recology. So frequently asked question, why, why do I receive a bill from the city of San Bruno every two months that's so large? What I want to submit to you that the primary answer to that question is related more in how we bill than the actual amount of the bill. And through this presentation, I would like to provide a few data points to articulate that. So first off, let's talk about the bill. It's actually not one bill, it is six bills in one. It is a bi-monthly bill that is actually comprised of six charges. Two months' worth of water charges, two months' worth of sewer and two months' worth of trash. For residential customers, we provide two payment options. They can pay in full or they can pay over two equal installments. And there is a actual bill that, that is up on the screen. But on the text, I want to highlight the billing cycle. And so this is a residential bill. And just to give you a little lay of the land, the service period is from November twenty first, twenty twenty through January twentieth, twenty twenty one, so a sixty day period. The statement was issued on January twenty seventh. With the first payment due thirty days after the end of the service period, so on February twentieth. And the very last payment should the resident choose to do so twenty days after the first payment on March tenth, which is industry standard to structure those payments that way and was twenty days apart. Now let's take a quick look at a sample utility bill. And this is a bi-monthly statement for a residential customer. Quickly, I want to highlight in the top left-hand area, we provide a, a summary of utility, actually water consumption. And so in this case, the total consumption is averaging around sixteen units. On the top right-hand side, there's account information. Some information on this particular bill has been blocked out. But there circled in red is where we provide the service period. I'll pause there by saying that we can actually improve on the structure of this bill. Because for many of our customers, what we've heard is it's actually not clear that they're receiving a two-month bill. And so in very small print in the top right-hand corner is the only place that we really articulate that this is a two-month bill. And then there are the two payment subs that are shown here on, in the lower right-hand area. And then on the rear, on the back of the bill, we provide significant information on the water rate. We explain our tiered water structure, we explain both the fixed and consumption charges for sewer or wastewater as well. And we also provide information on the structure of the total charges for garbage. There is also a table that shows the precise date that your meter was read, both at the beginning of the period and the, and the end of the period, as well as general billing information. So why do we issue a bi-monthly bill? Well, the answer is quite simple. It saves money and labor, thereby reducing costs to our rate payers and saving valuable tax dollars. Each bi-monthly cycle costs the city approximately five thousand two hundred dollars for printing, postage and service fees. Does not include labor. If we were to convert to a monthly billing process, we would essentially double those charges. And so by having a bi-monthly process, we are saving our, our rate payers in approximately thirty one thousand dollars a year, simply by billing bi-monthly, by issuing a bi-monthly statement, but giving our rate payers the options to pay monthly. So that's, that's answer one. It's a bi-monthly bill, but you're given the option to pay in two installments. The next part of the answer is to why is the bill so large here? It's really the structure. We are somewhat unique amongst our neighboring cities in that we are the only agency that sends a bill on our letterhead in our name for all three of these utilities, water, sewer and trash. And so if you were to assume that the rates were nearly equivalent amongst the five jurisdictions that are shown here, San Bruno, South San Francisco, Millbury, Pacifica and San Francisco, we're the only city where that comes in one bi-monthly statement. And so there's a, even if the rates were equivalent, there's a feeling that I'm paying the city a significant amount, whereas in other cities, the residents or property owners are not paying that to the city, simply by the structure of it. And so what's shown here is in South San Francisco, water is billed by Cow Water or the Westboro Water District on a monthly basis. Sewer is billed by the city or the Westboro Water District on property tax, so annual, on the county property tax roll. And trash is billed by South San Francisco Scavenger every three months. Millbury is the closest to us. They are issuing bi-monthly bills for water and sewer under the city's header. But garbage is billed by South San Francisco Scavenger, who is their contract provider. In the city of Pacifica, the North Coast County Water District provides a bi-monthly water bill. The city provides property tax, I'm sorry, provides sewer on the property tax bill. And just as a reminder to the public, that means you're not getting the bill every month or every two months. That is on your property tax. So it's one statement listed with all of the other charging agencies on the property tax bill. And then recology is billed bi-monthly. And in the city of San Francisco, there are San Francisco Water, Power and Sewer, which is actually a division of the San Francisco PUC. They issue monthly bills for water and sewer and trash is monthly by recology. So I, I want the council and the public to take away that part of the, the reason is because we are doing the billing. And it's all on the city's letterhead. And we do it bi-monthly, which gives the appearance of a larger bill than just issuing monthly statements. Next, I wanted to provide a sample bi-monthly bill by type. And the three types that are shown, staff tells me are relative examples of what a commercial account and a residential and a multifamily account pays, but it's not the average, but it is a close approximation. And so the first one is a commercial account for a rep, for a restaurant that are issued monthly statements. And so that is a total monthly statement of seven hundred and seventeen dollars. A single-family residence typically in our city has a bi-monthly statement of somewhere between four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty dollars. And what's shown here is five hundred and fifty, seven dollars. And a multi-unit, a multifamily individual unit account has a typical statement around three hundred and, around three hundred dollars. And what's shown here is three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And again, all of these charges are based on consumption for water and sewer, as well as fixed charges. And for trash, it's based on the size of the trash receptacles you have and whether you're a residential or a, or a, or a commercial customer. So with that information, let's do a quick look at where we fall with respect to rates. And so this information is provided to the city council every time we do a water or sewer rate study. For this presentation, we did have our consultant freshen up the rates. And so these are accurate as of January twenty one. And so we do have a presentation coming up next. Well, we'll talk about canceling the prior planned five percent rate increases for water and sewer. These charts are replicated there and Public Works Director Jimmy Tan will move on to more detail. Just at a high level, what I want to point out here is that we provide benchmark information for other cities and agencies in the peninsula. And for water at a six-unit water consumption count, the bill in San Bruno will be eighty one point forty, eighty one dollars, eighty one dollars and forty, forty one cent. It's nearly equivalent to the average of all of the agencies here, which is eighty one sixty-four. And so our charges are on par. It's a little bit more, it's about seven dollars more than the median. But we are totally within the standard deviation. And so our charges for water are on par with neighboring agencies. The other thing I want to point out with this, with this chart for both water and sewer is that the specific charge that a agency may have for water and sewer is really dependent on the operating cost to maintain their system, as well as the fixed charges to replace and maintain capital infrastructure. And as we know here, back in seventeen eighteen, the city of San Bruno actually had to increase our rates in order to cover needed capital improvements. And so while you can look at this chart and say, well, we're not on the low, on the low end, another way to look at it is say, we are within the average. And, and, and the same thing is true here shown for sewer. The average is a hundred dollars and twenty six cent and our charge is a hundred dollars and thirty one cents. And we are about three dollars higher than the median. So again, our cost is based on, our, our charge is based on our, our, our operating costs and our capital expenditures. But overall, we are in line with our peers. Next, we have a comparison for trash. And this chart was, was provided to the city council on March tenth, twenty twenty, at the last recology rate increase. And so what we know from the data that's shown here is that the peer rate average for a thirty-two gallon toter, the most common residential toter, is thirty- for a thirty-two gallon toller, the most common residential toller, is thirty-three dollars for the average and the median, and we are just below that at thirty-one ninety-three. And so, again, our charges for trash are on par with our peers. And so, in conclusion, sort of in answering that question, why are city bi-monthly utility bills so large? I really want to submit that we're sort of unique here in that we do the direct billing with our low bill on our letterhead for water, sewer, and trash on a bi-monthly basis. Residents are, as a reminder, provided the ability to pay in two equal installments. But that bi-monthly bill, again, is six charges. It's two months' worth of water, two months' worth of sewer, and two months' worth of trash. And overall, our rates are on par with our peer agencies. Now, again, that doesn't mean that a resident receiving that bill saying, you know, this is a large bill, and I talked to people that live in other cities and they don't get this. That's true. But when you truly break it down, it's really related more to the structure of the bill. Lastly, we can improve on format and layout to provide better clarity. And it is not lost on me that if we need to give presentations to explain our utility bills, we can make our utility bills a little clearer. And so, we will work on that. And so, next steps, because this is, and has been a question that I, that we received, we will do additional public outreach on the city's utility billing process. We will also include an explanation of this bill and other related information in a effort that we're developing. We are developing a new resident welcome package, so when we have a new customer sign up for a utility account, we can provide them with information and places and place why our bill is structured that way in context. We will assess and implement format changes to, again, provide greater clarity on the structure of our utility bill. And we will also strive to convert additional customers to paperless. Right now, of those fifteen thousand individual utility accounts, about half are on paperless. And so, if we can convert another twenty-five percent, that will create a significant savings, and we will certainly undertake that as a work effort, as a work effort. So, with that, I want to conclude the presentation. There's no action scheduled for council tonight. We just wanted to provide that information. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you for bringing back the screen. Real quick, and I know it could be considered a pass-through, but by us putting on the same bill, recology, they also help contribute toward the cost of the mailing. City manager?
That is true, Mayor.
All right. Sorry, folks, switch over to panelists. Councilmember Hamilton, apologize for the delay.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. Thank you, city manager, for the, for the presentation. The, more of a comment than a question, I'm glad to see that you're looking into formatting changes for the bill. One suggestion that I would, that I would make when going through that effort would be to, you know, right now, when you look at the bill, and I'm looking, I brought mine out as you were, as you were going through it, is just to be, just to have simple subtotals. How much of this bill is water? How much of this bill is sewer? How much of this bill is recology? Right now, there's four lines for water that I need to add up in my head to know how much the, you know, what the percentage of my bill is for water. I think that would be something simple, and you can gain the space because the graph for unit consumption is on the front and on the back, the exact same graph. So, there's, you know, there's all kinds of room for improvement there, but I would just suggest that having some, you know, big, bold subtotals of this is what you're paying for each of the, each of the big three, of the three pillars would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any more council hands. I do see a member of the public, and would ask the city clerk if you could bring him in, please.
Yes, Malcolm Robinson?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak. Let's put my glasses on. My concern over the water sewage, garbage bill is not formatting, it's not a formatting issue. The cost keeps going up. The cost of everything in San Bruno keeps going up, and I'll save some of this for later. But my utility bill has gone up ten percent a year, so since we've had this city manager, it's gone up thirty percent. So, so why is that? We're, admit, we're paying above-average prices for the peninsula. You know, I just not seeing where this, this money's going. The services provided are lessening. I do water aerobics. You cut the water aerobics budget twenty percent and cut a month out of the service. This year, we didn't even have water aerobics. Pacifica does. They seem to be able to get their act together. So, why this increase in costs in everything from water to cable to garbage to flood protection? The library is closed, closed for months. I have to go to a Berlin game to go to the library. So, to me, this is symptomatic of a large-scale, you know, trying to find the right words, large-scale increase of living in this town. Now, I talked to the city manager about it. He said, "Don't talk to me anymore. Talk to the city council." "City council, you're the guys we elect to manage our city, to better manage our city, and I look for you all to dig into why the costs of everything are going up in this town, and please get it under control." Because if you guys can't, we'll have to find somebody else who can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. We have another, we have one more speaker. If you could bring that speaker in now, please.
Yes, one moment. Jeffrey Tong. Trying to bring you in here. Giving me a little problem.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Tong speaking. Giovanna Gurgon mentioned that San Bruno rates are divided into six parts. He also mentioned that compared with other cities, we are relatively on par with them. But looking at our utility bills, water and garbage, compared from past years, it has gone up significantly, and we haven't used more water. We haven't used more, in fact, we use less water. Our garbage bill seems to have gone up significantly as well. Part of it, they claim, is because we are recycling more or they're collecting more for recycling, but what, if you want to save money, teach people how to compost instead of collecting more. I think you're just doing too much unnecessary things. One of the greatest things that we probably could use, excuse me, is collect community trash, people throwing away sofas and beds and other things out there. But for the, the people at large, we could reduce the amount that they charge by reallocating how we collect, especially with recycling. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, let's bring it back to the city council. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, let me put my hand down. These, this last set of increases, they came before the council, before I was on the council, and I am curious to know, because I've heard varying degrees of this, how long have these increases been in place? Is question one. And then, question two is, when does this last round of five-year increases end?
You know, excuse me, since we have that item next about the water wastewater rates, and we have people waiting for us on that topic, I think that might be there. I think this is about the layout of the bill.
Okay, that's fine. However, however you want to handle it.
Yeah, since we have them standing by. Vice Mayor Medina.
I can wait for, for the consultant. I think basically what I would like to say is, the answer is complicated. And, and I think clearly, we need to do a better job to explain it and have that explanation provided on our website, perhaps put a video together, kind of to quickly summarize what the facts are. And I just wanted to add that, and we can talk about this in our next part of sewer and water rate increase that we're going to eliminate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I still, I still believe that there would be a benefit to trying to move toward a monthly bill for a number of reasons. And I know that it adds cost, but if we can definitely get a majority of residents to sign up for an electronic bill, so we don't have to incur printing and handling costs, and honestly, I don't even, I couldn't tell you how to go about doing that. So, if I go to the website, I don't see where I would sign up for an electronic bill. So, it's definitely not an easy thing. It's not obvious. And so, I mean, that would clearly be a first step, is if we can get, as the city manager mentioned, it would be a clear step. But, you know, I, you know, people have large leaks in their house, and they have to wait two months to see a large bill to figure it out. That's, you know, for a lot of people, oftentimes, too late. And I know that there is some forgiveness, but I think it would be better not to waste the water in the first place, rather than wait longer to do it. I know back when we had to rely on people to physically read meters, it was definitely cost prohibitive to have extra staff to read the meters that often. But now that they're read remotely and electronically, I think there might be some benefit to that. And also, you know, there might be a benefit in having the city receive payments more frequently, because we have use of that money and interest on that money that we could collect. And then, if accounts were to go bad, we might have a heads-up on that sooner rather than later if the, if the bills weren't coming two months ahead. So, I, you know, I understand the reasons for, for why we don't do it now, but I think we could strive to move to that. And not only that, I mean, getting a smaller bill might be easier to handle for a lot of households where they're, if they're not, you know, chipping away at it based on a, on a more predictable cycle, it's definitely harder. It's a, it's one big bill that comes and might be more of a surprise if it's every other month, rather than a monthly thing that they could plan for. So, that was it. Definitely appreciate the information. I think information like this is important to get out to the public. There's a lot of bad information out there and a lot of misunderstandings about how we, how we operate, how we do things, and I think this is a really good step in that direction in terms of providing that information to the public. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, just one, one quick follow-up. I agree with, with Councilmember Salazar in what he said about it, it not being clear how to sign up for paperless billing. And I just want to, I just have a question about how exactly have we set up our paperless billing? I can see on the bill, and I've actually used the option, that there is an option to pay online, but I need to, I need to go there and log in and figure out how much I owe. And, and I've used that when I was almost late on my bill. And so, but how does the paperless billing work? Is it sending out an email or whatever to, so we know how much to pay and then directing people to that same portal, or is it some other mechanism?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. You can actually sign up for paperless billing on the online portal for water and sewer services. One of the challenges is that we do not have half of our customers even sign up for the online portal. And so, it's a, it's a two-pronged effort, and we, channeling, Councilmember Medina, the answer is complicated, but that is not sufficient, and we need to be complicated and make it simple. And this also relates to another organizational improvement that we're working on, which is updating our website, completely changing the interface, making it more customer-friendly, and changing how people interact and find information. Unfortunately, right now, our website is set up in our organizational structure, and so, you need to sort of more or less know where you're going to find the information. And the modern municipal sites really look at the website through the lens of the customer and take away the organizational silos. And so, I know council knows that we have launched that project, and that will bear fruit on the separate as well.
And then, just for myself, you know, Councilmember Davis used to talk about being, going in to sign up to where you can get alerts. I will be honest, I do, it does come through me on the email, and everybody knows my IT background. So, if I can sign up, it's easier than it seems, once you get in and correct to Councilmember Hamilton. I think there should be a way for easier. But I also think, because I'm not signed up, to where my understanding is, is that, let's say, there's the toilets running, which can raise your rates quickly, not even realizing if it's overnight for a long period. But I thought I heard that you could set it to where it pings you. You could also go back and look, why was it elevated at this hour? And is that, is that available? Because that, I think, is what folks should be able to sign up for, that also would be of value.
Yes, Mayor, through that portal, you can see your usage at any given moment. That is due to, for residential customers, we have the automatic meter readers on there, and we do have a project to install those for our commercial customers as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, thank you for the presentation and feedback. With that, we're going to move on, and again, as I talked about moving an item, so we're going to go to item six, conduct of business, item B, city clerk.
Item six, B, adopt resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rate increase for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you. Director Tan.
Sorry about that little technical difficulties there. Good afternoon, actually, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. I have a brief presentation on this topic tonight. The objective of the item in front of you tonight is to adopt resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rate increase for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. And this item is being brought tonight because staff was directed by city council during the January twelfth meeting to evaluate whether the water and wastewater rates can be canceled for the fiscal year twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. The agenda is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the water and wastewater rates and the factors for the rate increase. Then, I'll discuss the capital improvement program and project status. I'll talk about the water and wastewater funds and the utilities rates comparison. And I'll go over the alternatives, and lastly, the staff's recommendations. So, back in two thousand sixteen, the city council awarded a contract to Border Wells Associates to evaluate the city's water and wastewater rates. The rate evaluation was to ensure that there is necessary revenue to cover the projected operations and maintenance costs for the city's water and wastewater utilities in continuation of the ongoing program for investment in improving and replacing the city's aging and deteriorating water and wastewater infrastructure. So, the rate study was completed in two thousand seventeen, and it included adjustments of rates for five years, starting from fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So, through the discussions with the city council utilities subcommittee, the rates were limited to five percent per year increase for both water and wastewater rates. So, what are some of the factors for the water and wastewater rates increase? Well, the rating included projected increases in costs for the purchased water from San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to pay for their upgrades to their infrastructure as part of their seismic improvement program. The existing sewer costs includes ongoing treatment costs for their jointly-owned South San Francisco San Bruno Water Quality Control Plant. And there's also costs for complying with the San Francisco Baykeeper and Regional Quality Board Settlement Agreements. While these factors and other operating costs are important in determining rates, the most significant factor impacting both water and wastewater rates is the replacement of our aging infrastructure. The average age of the infrastructure for both systems over sixty years, sixty years old. Some of the sections in the city have pipelines over a hundred years old. Because of the need to replace the, the infrastructure and address the certain capacity deficiency, the city has an aggressive capital improvement program to replace the, both water and sewer system over the next two decades. So the Water Master Plan was completed in 2012, and it provided improvements, recommendations for the water distribution based on age, condition, and capacity. And all of those recommended improvements totaled $240.3 million approximately. And then the Sewer Master Plan was completed in 2014. And the staff has been prioritizing the work plan to complete the water, to complete the wastewater pipeline capacity and pump stations improvement projects. And those projects, improvements, the recommended improvements in the Sewer Master Plan is approximately $133.5 million. So in order to assess the rates required for the fiscal years 2017 to 2018, through the 2122 cycle, the rate study included several projects from both the water and wastewater master plans. So these are some of the water projects that were identified to be completed within the five-year period as part of the rate study. The projects were recommended improvements from the Water Master Plan. So, you know, how have we performed with the list of projects that we proposed to complete within the five years? So as you can see, majority of the projects have either been completed or has commenced design. Five projects have already been completed, four projects have already started the design phase, and one project is currently under construction, and one has yet to start. And here's the list of wastewater projects that were identified to be completed within the five-year period. Similar to the water projects, majority of the projects have been completed or has commenced the design. Construction of eight projects have been completed. One is under construction. Three projects have commenced design. And as previously mentioned, the most significant factor for raising the water and wastewater rates is due to the much-needed improvements of our aging infrastructure. So as you can see from the list of projects within the last five years, we have completed many water and wastewater projects and that have utilized the money collected through these rates and to rebuild our infrastructure to last another 100 years. So during a council meeting on January, you know, 12th, the council directed staff to evaluate whether the water and wastewater rates can be postponed for fiscal year 2122. Staff reviewed the fund balances and the projected water and wastewater fund balances through the end of next fiscal year, assuming no rate increases. The fund balances shows healthy reserve above the reserve targets for both funds. And the city can pursue canceling a rate increase for fiscal year 2122 without jeopardizing a capital project of funding. So here's a table that shows the information on fund balances, reserve targets, and the balance above the reserve targets. The total shown for the projected ending fund balance, which includes revenues, total operating expenses, and expenses for capital improvement program projects at the end of fiscal year 2122, projected that the water fund would have a balance of $13.4 million and a wastewater of $17.1 million. The reserve target is shown to be about $7.2 million for water and $7.5 million for wastewater. And the reserve targets includes, you know, these emergency capital reserve and budget for operating the debt services. And the reserves are needed to operate the water sewer enterprise for operating emergency unforeseen costs. So the projected ending balance for fiscal year 2122 shows a healthy balance for both water and wastewater fund. And even with the reduction in the reserves target, there is still a balance above the reserve target that's shown there on this slide. So should the rates remain the same? Staff requested assistance from a race consultant to determine the rates in comparison with other agencies. And this graph is similar to what you just saw from the city manager's presentation earlier. The water rates, you know, includes the fixed as well as the, you know, water consumption charges. The fixed charge, you know, covers a portion of the city's fixed costs, which includes, you know, administration, debt service, system maintenance, and equipment. You know, fixed costs, you know, only covers a relatively small portion of the fixed expense. So water quantity charges are billed on a near broader use basis as well. And this chart shows that the city's water rates are in the middle range in comparison to other regional agencies. And the San Bruno's water rate is equivalent to the average for all comparable agencies and only about $6.80 higher than the median. Here's a similar slide that you saw from the city manager's presentation earlier as well for the sewer rates comparison. And similar to the sewer, similar to water, the sewer rates have both the fixed and usage charges as well. And this chart shows that the city's sewer rates are in the middle range in comparison to other regional agencies. And the San Bruno sewer rate is equivalent to the average as well. And it's all comparable, average for all comparable agency and only $3 higher than the median. And this slide shows a comparison of rates for combined monthly water and sewer bill for a single-family residence. The average rate among all the agencies is approximately $182.35, whereas the median is $166.61. And then as shown, the San Bruno's combined bill is equivalent to the average for all comparable agencies as well, and only about $15 higher than the median. So as for the alternatives, there are two. Do not cancel the previously approved rate increase for water and wastewater for fiscal year 2122, or defer the fiscal year 2122 rate increase until fiscal year 2223. But a rate study will commence in late 21, late 2021 to look at the rates and the reserve for the next five years beyond 2122. So with healthy fund balances through fiscal year 2122, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rates increase for fiscal year 2122. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we do have our consultants available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Director Tan. And as a reminder, as the director said, this was at our January 12 meeting that when we had, staff brought us a document. One of the alternatives that they recommended, we could defer or what have you to the 2122 water sewer. As I spoke, and then every council member subsequent to me spoke, we gave direction, a little bit for us to get that resolution done. But then we also gave direction to staff to bring this back to us based on one of the alternatives that they had offered that I believe we all were in consensus for it to come back. So with that, my colleagues, questions, comments? Or I should guess to say questions while we have everybody here. There we go. Just waiting for someone. Thank you for breaking the ice. Councilmember Mason.
Hi, thank you. Thanks, Director Tan. I had asked in the last round of questions just how long the increases have been going on. And I can't remember if this next year would be the last year. So if we cancel this year, would 2022 be the last year of the last five-year increases?
That's correct. The last year of the five-year is the fiscal year 2122.
Okay. And then how long have we been having increases in San Bruno?
This was the five-years rate increase. Previous to that, there was another rate increase started in 2012.
And then I saw an article that also talked about a rate increase in 2009. Is that, do you know if that's right?
Maybe the city manager or Alex Handler will be able to answer that. I wasn't here during that time, so won't be able to answer that.
Sure. This is Alex Handler, who's, I was the, you know, the financial consultant that worked with the city on the last two rate studies, water and sewer. And the city's done a good job, this is going back, I mean, the rate increases that the city's been doing has been more of an ongoing lower gradual rate increases year after year. So at least, I mean, I don't have the history going back, but I see rate increases going back at least until 2008, '09 for some data that I'm looking at. But that's kind of been the philosophy of the city and a lot of agencies out there is rather than try to do no rate increases for a few years and have a big rate spike, kind of the slow gradual increase to keep rates in line with the cost of service. And the city's done a good job with that. So it's put you in a position now where, because of these rate increases, you can afford to, you know, defer or cancel the next rate increase and then kind of reevaluate for the future.
And Mr. Handler, how, so when cities do these increases, is there a point in time where you say this is good for another 100 years? We no longer would recommend these increases? I mean, at what point is that recommended?
Yeah, but that's a good question. And I'll be honest, from my side, I've been in the field for about 20 years. I've worked for more than 150 agencies. And I honestly, the rate increases can stop when the costs stop increasing. And as Jimmy mentioned, you've got, you know, increasing wholesale water rates. They're projected to keep on increasing over the next decade. You've got, you know, increasing costs for whether it's insurance, electricity, everything like that. So the goal is, I think, more management, you know, to try to keep the rates just gradually moving in line with the cost of service. And I think that's been kind of the goal of the city. There's has been more of a ramp up over the last five to 10 years to increase funding for the capital improvements and addressing the needs of aging infrastructure. It's not just San Bruno. This is pretty much every city on the peninsula who's been dealing with this in recent times. So the hope is, once you get your rates up to kind of the, you know, probably not that much different from where they are now, where they're kind of funding the ongoing cost of service and capital needs that it's, you know, really just inflationary rate increases needed going forward. And if you think about it, your rate increases over the last few years have, you know, been 5%. For water and sewer, that's not a lot higher than what inflation is for most water and sewer agencies. So I don't know if there ever is an end, but the goal is you look long, you know, every five years or so, you kind of look long-term and reset course with gradual increases. And it's more long-term rate management from my perspective. And sorry for the long-winded answer.
Yeah, no, it's okay. At some point, though, does it become less about replacement and more about maintenance? So maybe instead of a 5% increase, you see a 2% increase?
Yes, I think you're correct about that. Because the city right now has been engaging in kind of, you know, a system replacement and upgrade just through the age of the system. A lot of pipelines, as Jimmy mentioned, you know, 100 years old, 80 years old. So after that process is done, you're going to have a lot of pipelines that are built with new materials that probably have lifespans of, you know, you know, 100 years or so. I'm just, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just guessing. So I think it'll be more, you know, the replacement needs will go away, and it'll be more, you know, maintenance and stuff. And I think the level of increases will be less in the future after this program is complete. And doing this program, you're also, I think, reducing your maintenance costs. Because with a lot of old facilities, there's more leaks, there's more problems, emergency repairs. And as the system is replaced and the highest priority needs are taken care of, you know, it helps keep the maintenance costs down. So I think the city is doing a good job trying to proactively address these needs. And then the rates are kind of the financial stewardship that supports that.
Thank you. And Alex, I'm not sure if it was you, but I did see the last meeting, I want to say in 2017, when I believe it was your firm that gave the report. So this seems like it's in line with the report given back then in the recommendation. I also wanted to thank Director Tan because I've been asking for updates on the plans. You know, we do pay as a city a significant amount of money for the plans that we need, and they give us our recommendations. And so in particular, slides seven and eight, I think, really show that about 85% of the recommendations have been completed within the five years. And I think that as a council member, as a newer council member, it is really nice to see the progress because we hear a lot from the public, where's our money going? And this is something that's not visual. You can't see it. And it's really important that we see that our money is actually being spent on plans that we're putting into action. So thank you, Director Tan, for doing that for me and for the whole council.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Well, this is, this is the right time to take a pause in raising our water and our sewer rates. So I'm definitely in favor of that. I wanted to answer a question that was asked earlier. There were five years of approximately 10% rate increases in water and sewer. The need to spend that type of money was driven by a long term of deferred maintenance and a lawsuit that pretty much told the city from Baykeeper, you need to start doing this. And in order to do that, you need the money. In order to get the money, you need to raise your rates. With that deferred maintenance, San Bruno is an old city. And a lot of their pipes, they're worn out. They're leaking. When I worked here, I know our water department was out repeatedly fixing leaks just down a street over and over and over again. And that's what happens when you have old pipes. So we were legally required to catch up and to raise the money to fix the problems that we have. They're not going to go away. Things have a certain lifespan. And we're looking at, and we have implemented using PVC pipe, which lasts longer than cast iron pipe, or ductile iron pipe. So inflation is going to be with us, and costs will continue to go up. But we have the data that shows that we don't need this increase right now. And it was the right time to do it. And coincidentally, we have another need in our stormwater, which is pretty much going to balance out the cost of the amount of money that we would be paying for in our increase for water and sewer. We can, as ratepayers, put that money into fixing our stormwater system that, over again, once again, it's deferred maintenance. So we weren't taking care of the system as a city. It's like if you have a car, and if you don't maintain your car, at one point, it's going to start breaking down, and you need to buy a new car. And that's pretty much what we had to do with our water and sewer systems. And now we're seeing our stormwater system. So as I said earlier, the answers to our water rate history increases is complicated. Remember, I was on the last rate study, and we were able to reduce the increase from 10% down to 5% by the usage of bonds as well, so that we could spread those costs over time. So that's really important to remember. And it's nice to see that we're able to take a pause. And we will reevaluate our rates based on our growth that will be coming in the future. And that's as we learned today in 2021, late. So thank you for this report. It will be interesting still to come as we continue to do more work. And we have one item in consent that I'd like to talk about. So I'll wait until then to talk more about it. So thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council? No? Everybody moved. Oh, Councilmember Salazar.
I was just going to say that I'm still in favor of deferring this increase. Definitely appreciate staff's analysis into this and confirming that it is something that we can do comfortably. And I know our finances are still fragile. And so I definitely don't want to jump into making a decision that would have ripple effects or any kind of negative consequences. And so it is reassuring. And I know that we've been dealing with increases for a long time. The prices have increased dramatically over the past decade. And it is good to, again, share with the public why those rates have gone up and where that money is going. It's good to know that we are making some progress on those things. And, you know, I just want to leave it at that, that, you know, I realize that we're going to have to study this again, and depending on where we are and what's still left to be done, and the bonds that... the bonds that the Vice Mayor mentioned still need to be paid, we'll be paying on those for a while. And so, you know, I'm hoping this doesn't set us too far back. One of the reasons for the rates increasing so quickly was that we did, we, the city allowed itself to fall into sort of a, a really deep hole of deferred maintenance that was very expensive and it, it took a lot to get us out of there. We're really on a good track right now and I want to make sure that we don't do anything to derail that progress. So those are my comments.
Okay, I see, Councilman Hamilton, you haven't had an opportunity, so please go ahead.
So I'm absolutely in favor of pausing the increases. And one suggestion that I may have is, you know, obviously, you know, we, we, you know, we hear from the public and, and, you know, not everybody knows where this money is going. And I echo Councilmember Mason's comment about, you know, it's wonderful to see, you know, we put in, we put the plan in place, we're completing all of these projects, but the public largely doesn't know that this is happening. And I think we, we should try to address that. And I don't, I don't want to go spend a bunch of money in order to do that, but you know, just through, through social media, those types of, those types of channels to, you know, to get the, get the word out when these projects are completed. Because, you know, a few of the projects, I got a preview of, of the presentation a couple of weeks ago during my onboarding with Director Tan. A few of these projects that I understand came in significantly under budget, a huge win. And, you know, that, that's able to, to contribute to the, to our ability to be able to forego this, this, this last scheduled increase. And those are, that's information that the public needs to know in, in, in order to understand where their money is going. So I would, I would recommend that we, you know, try to, to spend just a little bit of effort to, to, you know, report out, you know, via social media and other channels when we, when we complete these projects and have these wins.
Okay, and, and one, one thing I will say is people, businesses especially on San Mateo Avenue, they, they appreciate the depth of what was being replaced and done because they would come to work and they would see it daily. But at the same time, what I would get from folks is, God, that street really looks great. It's been paved. But everything underneath, it's brand new, it's really assisted. As, as Vice Mayor said, it was the regional board that initiated a lot of that because of the SSOs. Baykeepers join them because they follow agencies around to get special little projects for other things. But, but yes, I think, as one of our callers said, what is the money really going for? I don't see it. But once it's all done, gets paved, you have a nice street on top, but really no one has the gravity of what really has transpired down below. So anyway, but yes. And Councilwoman Mason, then we're going to go to our City Manager.
Oh, just quickly, I don't think I said it, I of course support the cancellation of the fees. Thank you.
Wow, it just looks like we haven't even taken a vote yet. I don't even know if we need to. But City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to amplify a few points that council members made and, and connect them to data that was in Director Tan's presentation. So absolutely, the City Council asked us to look into this matter as we were talking about a stormwater, a potential stormwater 218 process. And the increase in stormwater is roughly equivalent to what the total combined savings would be for delaying or canceling these rate increases. And so that, that is why this item is for you tonight. In addition, connecting to what Councilmember Salazar said, absolutely, we looked at the enterprise and where we sit now in our capital improvement program. The analysis is that we will not be hurting our financial solvency in these two enterprises to delay the rate increase, or cancel the rate increase. That does not mean that subsequent rate increases will not be needed when we do our subsequent studies. One of the things we know is that as we deplete that accumulated balance in those, in, in the fund balance with those capital improvement projects, we will actually approach and potentially even come under those reserve targets now. We have in some of those funds, more than $10 million over the reserve target accumulated because we have saved money for capital improvement projects that are active, in design and, and to start soon. And so that money is allocated, but we will spend it down. But when we take a snapshot today of the enterprise, we can cancel the rate increases absolutely and not hurt the enterprise. And so I just wanted to amplify that.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's important too. When we do the required by law, the Prop 218, and it goes out and rates are increased or the voters make decisions, the council, it can go up to, but may not exceed. But it also gives the council the ability to review and lessen, or in this case defer or suspend, and it gives us that latitude to do so. The important thing for me is that we are not going to hurt the capital or the, the funds that we have in the enterprise. And that to me is what is, is most critical. Good thing is, is that it comes when we have, are having some challenging times, everybody is. So I think we're all feeling that is a good thing. And, and again, Director Tan was indicated earlier by Councilwoman Mason, kudos to you and kudos to your department and the work that you've done. Councilmember Hamilton said, having things come under budget needs to be applauded. Having the work that's been done, having a plan that's been there for five years and it has systematically been having progress and you've been achieving that, that work product is appreciated and thank you to you and your team. With that, colleagues, I'm not sure who might want to, but is this?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, geez, Vice Mayor Medina. We'll quit on.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution canceling the water and sewer rate increases for fiscal year 2122.
Okay, Medina Salazar, motion second. Roll call City Clerk.
Did, I'm sorry, did, did, was there public comment on this?
Oh, you know what? No, there has not been. I, I, maybe somebody doesn't like what we're doing. Is there, thank you though, Councilmember Hamilton.
Never know.
I, I've been checking continuously as we've been speaking. There has been none thus far. Still seeing no hands. We're going to go back to the roll call for the motion, the motion and the second.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton, just as a reminder, never know. My, my eye could be on a different panel. Okay, with that, we are going to move back to consent, right? So item five, consent call. All items are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless, unless requested. So for myself, we're going to need, on item G, I'm going to need to read a statement and then before we open it up to the public. So right now, are there other items that are to be removed for a separate vote? And then I'm going to ask for items, just need commentary or wanting. First, anything to be removed for a separate vote? Separate vote. I'm seeing no head. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, okay, good. Everybody's going no? Is there any items for, for further, you know, dialogue or a question? Vice Mayor?
Item E, please. E as in Edward.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Item D, just a very minor correction for the minutes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mason.
I think same D as in dog and E as in Edward, so I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so I'm going to take them in order, if that is okay, folks, just so we keep in the system. So let's go to first on consent, item D. Item D is approve the regular minute meetings for the special and regular minutes of January 4th, 26th and 29th, 2021. Councilmember Hamilton.
So just a minor correction on item 6B, where we adopted the resolution for the fire apparatus. It shows that I made a, that I made the motion, but it doesn't show that anybody seconded it. So just need to add that in.
That would, that would be important because the fire chief would probably be very disappointed if all of a sudden nothing was ordered, huh?
Got to make sure that we get those trucks. Oh, yeah.
Yes, I will. Thank you all, add that in.
Thanks. Councilwoman Mason.
Yeah, so Councilmember Hamilton's was one. And then I also wanted to ask that, this is more of a general consideration, but in this one, because the arena was such a lively topic, to include the, for those residents who offered where they live, to include the city of residents in the minutes. And then for, and this was for the minutes of January 26th, 2021. And then the other area that I had a comment on was to change the area around the city net services. The language right now, hold on, I actually, this, so the language right now just reads that the city manager had expressed that the city net services, that there were no city net service related expenses in the foreseeable future. And I'd like to add that it didn't mean that they could not be increased as the year progressed and the networks negotiated their rates with the city, which is what the city manager said during the meeting. So I just think it needs to reflect the entire statement that the city manager made.
Yeah, not, not knowing that I haven't gone back to look because I had no idea. And so the city manager maybe remember, I don't remember verbatim, but you probably have gone back and checked. But Vice Mayor Medina, your hand is up, sir.
Sorry, that was for item E.
Okay. Um, okay. So is everybody clear on, on that? Staff, we're good? Okay.
So let's move on to item E. Adopt resolution extending the avenues 1-1 and 1-22 sewer and water main replacement project as complete, authorizing the filing of the notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $327,416. And we're going to go to Councilmember Medina, I mean, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina. It gets sort of confusing, I understand. Well, tonight's a perfect, perfect example. You know, here we have an item, it's on consent. We had a project of eight point, almost $8.6 million that got done for $7.2 million. How often does a government project get done under budget by 15.8%? It takes a lot of work, takes, and, and, and I, I would like to thank staff and, and this is an example of how water and sewer services to a portion of our community, they're absolutely brand new. And not only that, there are curb ramps installed, there are, there is new pavement. Florida Avenue was one of the worst streets in San Bruno. And now it's a newly paved street with, with the invisible water and sewer system underneath, right? Seven, $7.2 million, right? So it's, it's messy when you're, when you're replacing an existing water and sewer system. When you're putting in a brand new water sewer system in a brand new development, it's really easy. There's nothing in the way. So wonderful job, staff. In the future, I, I would, I would ask that updates on the construction activity be provided. What happens is typically the, the sewer gets installed and then the workers leave and the residents don't really know, like, okay, they left. And, but they didn't fix the street. And then months later, the crews come back again and rip up the street, they put it in the water and the street's not all paved. And then finally, everything gets done. So if we can get an update on the remaining construction projects that are occurring, the active construction projects that are occurring with status and completion dates, estimated completion dates, I think that would be helpful for people to understand and to really appreciate that, that this is what it's going to take to replace water and sewer in an old city. So thank you, staff, for your job well done.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mason.
Yeah, I'm echoing Councilmember Medina's comments. I highlighted here a cost savings of $1,361,376. And that just brings a big smile to my face because we are in such a precarious situation right now with our finances. And so according to the staff report, $715,345 will be returned to the wastewater enterprise fund and $646,031 to the water capital fund. So just a huge thank you and I hope that these savings do come to the council as they occur because it's just really good news to share. Thank you.
And the news will come because it is required and there are contract changes, which we put in some time ago. But yes, when we close them out, they do come back to council as they had not in the past. And to the public, I will go through the last item and then I'll open it up for the public, just so we have at least covered all the items. Okay, item G, adopt resolution approving amendment, amendment one to the employment agreement between the City of San Bruno and Javode Grogan, City Manager. This is, if, if those remember when the Bell, City of Bell did their things, there are some changes to the law. So I'm going to read from the following that is a requirement. And this is what I will be reading, so understand that's why I'm looking down so I get every word correct. Based on the agreement with the City Manager, pay adjustments are reviewed annually and are dependent on various performance factors. Councilment multiple times in closed session with the City Manager and determined that the amendment agreement is fair and equitable based on performance and labor market comparison. The contract amendment provides for the same buyout options for management and vacation leave as department heads. The amendment also brings the City Manager from 12% below the median of comparable cities with the, with the, San Mateo County, sorry, based on the 2021 survey, for the salary increase of 6%. $258,203 effective the first pay period of January 2021, the City Manager remains a 6% below peers to, within the county. So that's something, I know it's wordy, but needs to be read. But at this time, before I open it up to the public, I want to turn to our City Manager and who has follow-up to this item and a comment, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and to members of the public. So I asked the Mayor to speak on this item because I wanted to share a few words. And I know that this is typically not, that this is not typical, so I want to thank the Mayor for allowing me to do this. First, I, I really want to thank the City Council for the conversations we had, recognizing where my compensation sits in comparison to the peer, my peer city managers in the county and, and taking the, the bold action to offer an increase, knowing that where we are financially, I can't be, be brought on par. So I really want to thank you for that and that political courage. I also want to say that everybody that knows me knows that I don't do this job for the compensation. I am deeply committed to what we're doing here in San Bruno. I am deeply committed to every last member of the city team. And I, I am so proud of the work that we have done. And, you know, frankly, given where we are financially as an organization and given the financial challenges that continue to confront us with COVID-19, I do want to proffer a change here should the City Council be amenable. And I want to take the action to sort of unilaterally postpone the salary increase a full year. So instead of taking effect January 1, 2021, push that out a full year to the first pay period in January of 2022. No retro, no, no back pay, just a full pushing out of that salary plan section of the amendment. And so I want to thank you and to all, all members of the team. We say it internally, one city, one team, and we're all in this together.
Thank you, City Manager. And I'll have to check with the attorney, but my understanding is that council, if wishing to accept that from the City Manager and make that modification, we do not need to separately pull it and vote for it, you correct me, but as long as we give direction that that can be modified, we don't need to have it come back with a new resolution.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The City Council approves the request to extend the salary portion of the amendment for a year. We'll reflect that in the amendment to the contract when, before it's finalized and signed.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public, and obviously it can be on any item on consent, since we've gone through a lot, so city clerk, if you would.
Uh, yes, we have Paul Wapinski.
Good evening, I'd like to talk about the city manager raise. Um, the medium income in San Bruno is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh, lots of people are out of work, we just got eight million dollars from the budget, we raised the sales tax, I'm sure Recology's going to come for more money soon, yet the council's going to approve a six percent increase, uh, in the city manager's salary. That's eighty-four thousand dollars more than our Congresswoman makes, and twenty-one thousand more than the Vice President of the United States, as a perspective. Every council meeting talks about how bad our finances are, and, um, you know, he, he just came out and he said he doesn't work for the money, um, then maybe we should spend that money on people who need it. You know, I don't, I don't begrudge, begrudge him any, uh, uh, you know, not making a good salary, and he seems to do a good job for the Sydney, he's on top of what's going on. But I asked the five, uh, members of the council, how can you possibly justify a six percent pay raise to someone making almost double the median income in a time when so many people are, either don't have employment, are not getting a salary, uh, and not getting salary increases at all? Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Uh, yes, the next speaker is, uh, Shabina Hussein. I'm trying to unmute you. Shabina, I'm unable to unmute you on my end, are you able to unmute yourself?
I'm so sorry, I didn't record, realize what I did. I didn't mean to, like, say anything. Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Stephen Seymour.
Sandra Perezberg is here. Um, I wanted to commend the city manager for foregoing that raise. I mean, the words on the street were like, how, how could this even be a consideration at a time like this, when, um, we're just financially doing so bad, our city is visibly deteriorating, we see the litter every day, not to mention, I mean, this, this is what I'm being told, people who will not be receiving salary increases will be the local eight-fifty-six employees and local three-fifty mid-management employees. Also, the, uh, rec department is running with just two coordinators, coordinators, uh, there's a hiring freeze for the rec supervisor and senior center coordinator. The parks department, I've been told that three employees retired early, so three others would not be laid off. Seven parks of workers for fourteen parks, twelve baseball fields and two football fields. That's, um, that's a lot of work, and, and I'm not sure if this is correct, but I, my understanding is that in July twentieth, during a hiring freeze, that an assistant was hired for the city manager. Um, so I, I think it's, um, we really look, need to look, uh, where our money is going, and to spend it as wisely and as fairly as possible. Um, there, there's a lot of people out there suffering, and there will definitely be, um, a lot of really bad feelings if this, uh, raise were to take place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be Trish, Teamsters eight-fifty-six, just one moment while I bring you in.
Hi, councilmembers, thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to listen to me, I'm Trish with Teamsters eight-five-six, um, and I'm just, uh, calling to reiterate my comments that I sent in earlier, and asking that, um, before these raises go through, that we do take a look at your city workers, who we represent, every city worker in the City of San Bruno, have done a lot to sacrifice their own wage freezes, uh, increase, froze their wage increases, they've worked to help keep the city open and thriving throughout this pandemic to provide to the residents, so that they're not forgotten during, through this pandemic, and that we make sure that when the economy is better, that we also restore our, our members, and these workers who have worked so diligently through this, and put their own health and safe, that safety at risk, before we give increases to the city manager.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jeffrey Tong.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Tong speaking. Again, I'm one of the others, uh, that want to, um, uh, want to thank the city manager for foregoing his, uh, increase this year. For two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six percent is about fifteen thousand dollars, enough to support one starving person who's unemployed, with so much trash in the city. I've been asking the city council, let's look at the possibility of maybe hiring some homeless people to help clean up the streets, and maybe even help them with housing, whatever it might be, but as they say, with adopting a dog or something, you may not change the whole world by adopting a dog, but you change the whole world for that one dog. And so I'm not comparing people with dogs, but ne- nevertheless, you can change one person's life with that one salary increase. So thank you, um, Jovan Grogan, for, uh, for stalling your increase in salary. Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you for your comments, be no other public comment on consent. I'm going to bring it back to council. Again, everything could be taken in one action, and if we wish to concur with the manager's, uh, request, uh, that can be done simply, um, by modifying that, uh, as we take full action. So, oh, I'm sorry, um, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just, I had, um, written, um, and I just actually added a little something based on, um, city manager Grogan's comment, but I just wanted to thank, uh, Trish for her public comment on behalf of the San Bruno team that represents Teamsters Local Three-Fifty and Local Eight-Fifty-Six, and the others who called in for public comment. Uh, I think it's important to highlight some of the movement that San Bruno has really seen in this past year, I'm focusing on this past year because I've seen it myself, um, in revenue generation under the leadership of our city manager. Um, when combined and implemented, these are all in their way to place San Bruno in a better position than where we are and where we have been. Um, so in, in twenty-twenty, we, as a city, entered into the Walmart participation agreement that's going to provide approximately three million dollars to the City of San Bruno on an annual basis. Uh, the transient occupancy tax, also known as TOT, um, went on the ballot and was approved by the voters. Uh, the cannabis tax was placed on the ballot, was also approved by the voters. Um, there's also been a creation and adoption of the short-term rental ordinance that is approved, that was approved in twenty-twenty and currently underway. Um, amongst these very impactful decisions in twenty-twenty, we're also moved and directed the staff to continue to negotiate the Bay Hill Plan, which is, um, Bay, which is supposed to bring in approximately sixty million dollars in fees to the City of San Bruno. Uh, we also saw the use of the Measure K funds actually being implemented, um, with the plans, the designs, the procurement, all done by the city under the city manager's leadership, um, to, um, actually improve the bleachers and the Tom Lehrer fields along with the Lions Club. So, um, tonight, we just heard the item around the cancellation of the water and sewer rate hikes. The last meeting, we agreed to consider foregoing any city net cable internet rate increases, and agreed to have staff make a request to Recology to forego an increase in two thousand and twenty-one. This is all being done to assist not those who can afford to pay these impacts, but those who are really living on the margins. Uh, we also did not provide increases to Local Three-Fifty and Local Eight-Fifty-Six, so it only makes sense that the city manager would also forego his increase in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, finally, I just really want to thank city manager Grogan, um, this was not expected, uh, for making something that seemed really so unattainable for seven years, um, more beautiful by such a simple fix, and this is really these moments that make our city manager so valuable, um, with just, um, putting grass at Florida Park, it really alleviated the blight for the entire neighborhood who has been living with that for seven years. Um, as we continue to create the foundation of financial stability and strong government, governance, I look forward to seeing what the next year brings to San Bruno under your leadership, city manager Grogan. It has been an amazing year, and I thank you for, um, for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton, you did have your hand up, but then it went down, so...
Uh, mostly because, um, councilmember Mason said what I wanted to say so much more eloquently than I want them, I was going to, so, um, I will shorten my statement to, to commend the city manager for this action.
Anything else from, uh, the Vice Mayor or councilmember? If, uh, Vice Mayor Medina?
I'd like to say thank you. Um, it's, um, I look forward to working with our city manager, and, and, uh, we're getting a lot of stuff done, and, uh, thank you for, for, for taking this position, and, and thank you for, um, deferring an increase, like, like all our other employees. So, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Salazar?
I'll also echo, uh, what's been said, and, uh, offer my appreciation to the city manager for, uh, for this gesture, and, and for all his hard work, uh, over the, the past, uh, couple of years. Uh, it's, uh, we have seen a lot of, a lot of progress, and, um, and, and I think this, this was, uh, the right thing to do, and I appreciate, uh, his, uh, his, um, you know, his effort to, to make things, uh, make things right, and make sure that, uh, that, uh, that fairness and equity is, uh, is, is well represented. And, uh, with, with that, I think we...
Hold on. Look, can the mayor say something, and then I'll throw it back to you?
All right.
Just so we all have a chance. No, um, just wanted to say, uh, you know, Vice, Vice Mayor Medina was, and so was I, former city employees. So, you know, at times when, uh, people are, whether it was back then when we had furloughs or whatever, or when I, you know, we took a freeze so we didn't have other situations arise, um, it's important, um, and we acknowledge the employees of Eight-Fifty-Six and Three-Fifty that, uh, that do the job, come to work, and have worked through all these challenging times. And also, uh, city manager, you are, uh, you know, you, you are responsible for the day-to-day operations, so I appreciate you, uh, leading by example, and, um, asking for this to be deferred. Yes, it is uncharacteristic for the manager to speak, but, uh, I appreciate our conversation, and, uh, I thank you for your comments. So with that, uh, Councilmember Salazar.
All right, so with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar with, uh, the modifications to the minutes recommended by councilmember Mason, and the modification to the city manager's contract as, um, uh, stated by the city manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Sal, Salazar, seconded by Mason, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Okay, thank you for everyone, and we're going to move on to, um, back to conductive business, uh, number six, item A.
Wave first reading and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Bruno amending and re-adopting Title VI Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the San Bruno, San Bruno Municipal Code and amending section one point zero four, four point zero two zero.
City attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, um, if you could just give me a minute, I'll pull my PowerPoint presentation up, and hopefully not encounter any technical difficulties when I'm sharing my screen, so let me, uh, let me do that.
Yes.
Can everyone still see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, you never know these days. All right, so we're here to, um, take a look at revisions to Title VI of the municipal code, and I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation to walk everybody through it, and then, um, happy to take any questions at the end. So here's our agenda tonight, we're going to give you a little background, we're going to, um, introduce and discuss amendments to Title VI, and we're going to talk about next steps. So here's the background, you've seen this slide before, but it, it never hurts to see it again, especially since there's usually a couple of months in between these presentations on the municipal code. So we started this back in, uh, late two thousand and eighteen, when the city council directed me to, uh, comprehensively amend the code, and the primary focus then was to update it for internal consistency and, uh, to comply with, uh, current law, and in addition to that, to have whatever policy discussions were necessary for those revisions. So we initiated, um, in late that year, introduction of Title I and, uh, a portion of Title II, and then in November, our code publisher, Quality Code Publishing, QCP, completed their initial review, and we've relied on them for, uh, a lot of the consistency determinations, so that, uh, we can make sure that the code does conform with state law, and, um, we've independently reviewed it for that, and plus, uh, with respect to recent case law. So in November, the city council took action to adopt amendments to Titles One and Two, and, uh, then in, uh, July, they finished up the rest of Title II and all of Title III, which was revenue and finance. In March of two thousand and twenty, the city council adopted revisions to Title IV, which was licenses and regulations, and then, um, later, just a, a month later, provided policy direction regarding Title V, which was nuisances. And so, um, last June, those amendments were adopted to Title V. So we're now here to talk about Title VI, which is entitled Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, and Title VI consists of, uh, twenty chapters, and the good news is, we don't have to necessarily go through each one of them individually, but what I do want to do is give you a, a brief overview of the ones that we are recommending amendments to, and for those that we're not recommending amendments to, the reasons why, why not, and obviously, all of those topics are open for your discussion. So, uh, the first chapter is definitions, next is firearms, next is trespassing and loitering, and for those three, we are going to propose some amendments, and I'm going to cover those, uh, just in a couple of slides, so we'll, we'll leave those aside for the moment. We're going to display a couple of, uh, chapters here that we're not, um, at this time recommending any amendments to, and so, um, there's, there's one having to do with abusive solicitation, so that sort of aggressive panhandling, there's a juvenile daytime curfew that we're not at this time recommending changes to, but obviously, that's also subject to discussion. Same with noise regulations, we're not recommending any changes to that at, at this time, and then this real estate transfer disclosure about airport, airport noise, uh, that's, that's a result of SFO, uh, being in, um, you know, near our city. So, uh, those are some of the first sets of chapters, and remember, we are going to go back and talk about the ones to which we are proposing amendments in just a minute. So to finish up the remaining, uh, chapters, uh, we have assisting locked-out people, uh, that's a fairly standard one, we have regulations of adult businesses, uh, drug paraphernalia, we'll talk about in a minute, because we are proposing actually that to be repealed, aerosol paint container regulations, animal control, and alcoholic beverages in public, those we're not proposing any amendments to at this time. And then the last, uh, bucket of these is, uh, false alarm, there's a, a small amendment there, uh, which we'll talk about in a minute. We're not proposing any amendments to the, the two fireworks chapters, or the tobacco or, uh, smoking, uh, regulations, um, a council member did catch one thing on the smoking regulations, we'll, we'll talk about in a minute, um, and, uh, we'll have a separate discussion about the marijuana chapter six point five eight and five nine. Um, just quickly, with respect to the smoking regulations, a council member indicated that, um, there was a section that delayed its implementation, and that section is no longer operative, because it's already been implemented, so we could certainly either leave it in or take it out, it, it doesn't really matter. Um, and then we'll talk about the marijuana ones, uh, in just a couple of minutes. So let's, so, so that's an overview of the twenty chapters, let's focus on the five that we are recommending amendments to, and then we can always come back to some of the other ones in the... Let's focus on the five that we are recommending amendments to and then we can always come back to some of the other ones in the discussion. So the first one is six point oh four definitions. There's a bunch of, of relatively minor changes to that. I would say the most significant change that, that you, you see is for consistency with state law having to do with, um, the reference to gender. So, um, we, we currently have male and female. A state law requires that we also, uh, refer to gender as non, uh, one possible. Gender identification is non-binary and so that's included in, in that and that will update the, the code. With respect to six point oh eight firearms, uh, this came up last year, um, and, um, it, this is to propose, guess what I would refer to as a relatively non-controversial ordinance to supplement state law having to do with safe storage of firearms. And we're going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. But trespassing and loitering, six point twelve, uh, there's really just some minor changes there for consistency with state law. And also you might remember when we did Title IV, we amended, um, definitions and, uh, of headlors and solicitors to comply with state law then, and this conforms this particular title to those definitions as well. Uh, drug paraphernalia, we're actually recommending that be repealed because state law has, in essence, preempted, uh, that and we checked with the police chief about that and, um, he's, he's in agreement, we don't need that anymore. Uh, false alarms, there was a, a very minor change in state law, uh, that basically says that if you're one of the, um, alarm companies, you can't be charged the, the, the city's false alarm fee unless it was a problem with their equipment. So we've, we've shown that change in the, um, uh, in the, uh, text. So those are the, the five chapters that we are proposing changes to and, and let's drill down a little bit deeper into the ones that the changes are more substantive. And primarily it's, it's firearms. So we're recommending review of a safe storage ordinance and what is that? So the object of the ordinance is really to mitigate, uh, the increased risk of injury or death from unsecured firearms in residences. And you'll notice from the staff report, uh, there's a lot of information about the fact that, uh, having, uh, firearms in residences that are unsecured in one way or another really does increase the risk of injury or death both to, uh, to minors and to adults. And so that's the purpose of, of this ordinance. And, uh, it's also been written so that it provides a bit of an incentive, uh, to report unsecured firearms because it says if you're one of the people who reports them, then you can't be prosecuted for violating the, the ordinance. So drilling down even a little bit farther, there is a state law that addresses this, it's, it's in the penal code. And basically what it does is it prohibits the unsafe storage of loaded or unloaded firearms that the owner knows or has reason to know that a child or a prohibited person could access them. And a prohibited person is one of those people that, that is prohibited from owning a firearm under state law. So, um, in that ordinance, if it's violated, you can be convicted either of a misdemeanor or a felony, but it does require, a violation does require that there actually be an injury or, or death for that. So the, uh, municipal safe storage ordinances, I have a couple of features, one of which really is to try to fill some gaps in, in state law. So for example, it's designed to protect adults as well as children from the risk of improperly secured firearms. It doesn't just apply to, to children. And I, I've been personally involved in, for example, some weapons petition cases where the, the city, as you know, uh, does go to court on a relatively frequent basis to remove, uh, weapons from homes where there's been instances of domestic violence. And so, uh, those are, those are adults usually involved in those things. And, uh, you know, you have a couple of those cases and it's pretty scary to, to understand what sorts of unsecured weapons are, are being, uh, kept in some of these homes. Um, we've had residents who keep loaded guns under their pillow, uh, who keep firearms strewn around the house, uh, in case there's a, you know, somebody comes into the house and they're sort of in different locations so they could be easily accessed by the resident. There's really a whole bunch of very scary scenarios that can occur in these things. So that's partly what the law is designed to address. And the enforcement mechanisms for, for this ordinance would be the same as for all other ordinances, either an administrative citation or a misdemeanor. Uh, similar ordinances have been adopted by a variety of cities on the peninsula. They're not all identical, they're, they're different in certain ways. Uh, some adopted them, uh, earlier, some have yet to adopt them. So we're not the first or the last, um, but we, what I tried to do when I drafted the proposed amendments is to take what I felt was the best features of, of all of those ordinances and, and put them into ours to, to make it both simple, um, easy to understand and easy to follow. Alright, so, um, let's, uh, just take a, a minute and discuss the cannabis ordinances because as I indicated in the staff report, at this time, we're not proposing that we have a, a deep policy discussion, um, or direction about revising those, uh, for a couple of reasons. So you might remember last year, the city council did defer those so they could place the, the cannabis tax measure on the ballot and I think, you know, a couple of council members have referred to that in some of their coll- uh, comments and that did pass. Um, and at that time, the city council did not direct staff to develop any regulatory changes to the existing ordinances. However, it was clear that the city council contemplated that they were going to review the current prohibition on cannabis activities after the ordinance, um, was adopted by the voters, the tax ordinance. So really the, the question, I think for tonight is, uh, do we want to sort of stop and pause and take a deep dive into, uh, those ordinances or what staff is recommending for a variety of reasons is simply to discuss, uh, that work effort during the March or April, uh, of this year, coming, coming up in really just a, a month or, or two, the priority setting meetings. And the reason for that is that unlike, uh, other ordinances, this is going to require sort of a comprehensive effort involving multiple departments. I think we've told you that, that before, uh, late last year when we were talking about it. And so to, to tilt up efforts from, you know, finance, police, uh, uh, obviously the city attorney's office, uh, but then also, uh, planning and economic development, really need a collaboration of all those departments and I think quite a bit of time, uh, to, to put that together. We also have, as you might recall, outside consultants who have helped us, or who will help us develop that ordinance and also the implementation of the ordinance because once the ordinance is adopted, uh, we want to make sure that when somebody comes in the door and says, "I'd like to open a business", that we have all of those systems in place and ready to go. And that's, so that's quite a work effort. And in talking with, uh, staff about it, we thought it would be best to put that on the list of, uh, tasks for the city council to direct staff to do if they wish during their priority setting. So, uh, the next steps would be to review the proposed amendments, uh, introduce the ordinance or if you want to make some substantive revisions in it or provide me with additional direction, I'm happy to take that. And then we can come back and reintroduce it at the subsequent, at a subsequent meeting. And then, but if not, we would schedule adoption for the next meeting. So, uh, the, the schedule does remain on track, just, just barely, uh, to try to complete this, uh, before the end of, of the year. Um, if we, you know, do complete this, then we'll, we'll have through Title XI to do. And, uh, Title XI, actually, we've already done about half of it. You might remember that that was all the building and fire codes that were done last year. So there is a little less than a, a full title to do there. But, uh, we are going to do our darndest to try to get that accomplished, uh, this year despite the tremendous work effort that the rest of staff is putting in on many, many other projects. So that concludes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you and, uh, I know we probably have a couple of folks that have been waiting. I just want to remind, uh, council that on the six point oh eight, uh, w- which is the, uh, potential s- safe storage of firearms, that was something that we, uh, had discussed and Councilmember Hamilton, you were not on the council at the time, that I brought up on July twenty-eighth and brought forward to council under council comments and asked and there was consensus to have this brought back forward in an ordinance, but it was with staff's recommendation to wait since it included chapter six to get it all done, right? And, 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 uh, collective. So there's, there's something that was based then. So what I'd like to do at this point, if it's okay, since it's getting close to ten, to see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this item and then we will obviously bring it back to council. I just want to make people able to do other things that they need to do that. So, city clerk, if you'd call on the public.
Okay, Mayor Medina, um, we have, I'm trying to bring... Sorry, we have Kelly Traver, but I'm having trouble bringing you in the room. I'm sorry, Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry, maybe we can, uh, go, uh, to Mr. Selling and then we can...
Well, let me see if maybe I'm, I'm just trying to get her unmuted at this point. Kelly, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, there you are. Okay, yes, now we can.
Um, hi, Mayor and council members. First, I want to thank you hugely for addressing safe storage of firearms in the home. Um, as you know, one small child dies every day in this country and two teens commit gun suicide every day, um, after finding an unsecured firearm in their home or a relative's home. Eighty percent of school shootings, eighty percent of all school shootings occur by a student or former student of that school who obtains an unsecured firearm. This pasture with COVID has seen a dramatic increase in unintentional child deaths by a shocking forty-three percent and teen suicides with unsecured guns by nine percent. Um, mandating that a firearm be safely stored in a securely locked container does not prevent someone from protecting oneself in an emergency. Firearms kept in a securely stored locked container can be accessed in seconds if need be. Research also does show that safe storage can prevent the unintentional deaths of small children and teen gun suicides by up to eighty-five percent. So I thank you so much for proposing a safe storage ordinance. It's just common sense gun legislation to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is John Selling.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good, thank you. My name's John Selling, I'm a physician and, uh, I'd like to thank you for what sounds like, uh, uh, going forward with passage of, of, of this, uh, amendment. I, uh, I'm alarmed by the increase in domestic gun violence that we've seen during COVID, uh, leading to, to, uh, accidental deaths in children and adults as well as an increase in suicides. Um, as you all know, having a gun available makes it a lot easier to commit suicide, uh, whereas if more time, uh, is allowed, uh, th- these types of things would not happen. So I, I thank you very much for considering this. Uh, I would love to see much more done, but, uh, at least, uh, uh, with safe storage of guns, I think that's a good start. And so, uh, uh, hopefully this will mitigate some of these, uh, useless deaths. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our last speaker, next please.
Uh, last speaker is Lisa Wiedeck. Just one moment, while I bring you in.
Hello.
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Um, so I just want to echo, um, the comments that have already been made and say thank you for introducing this amendment. It's so important and urge you all to adopt it. Um, you know, just as, as a mother, just knowing that our children are safer, um, if they go to play at a friend's house, um, if the, the parents, uh, own firearms and it, it would be safely stored and they wouldn't be able to access it. Just being one use case, but one that we see way too often. So, um, that's, that's really all I wanted to come here to say. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Now we'll bring it back to city council, uh, for questions on, uh, the, um, Title VI of the ordinance, I mean of the, uh, municipal code. To my colleagues, anything? Going once? Going, okay. Councilmember Mason?
Hey, so, I, I have, um, quite a bit. I think that, um, I, if it's okay with the city attorney, um, should I just go down the list? I know I sent an email and thank you for the response, but there is a bit that I want to make sure we touch on since we're looking at the entire, I mean, we are essentially approving the amendments, but we're also looking at the entire section. So, um, just in regards to the firearms, I do have one basic procedural question is, um, if it gets approved, the amendment gets approved, how will the change be communicated to those who own guns today?
So, that's a great question. Um, we, we did not explicitly consider a communication plan. I wonder if maybe the, the police chief might have some thoughts about that. Yeah, he and I spoke about the ordinance at, at some, in some detail before proposing it. And, uh, I don't want to put him on the spot, but, uh, I wonder if he has any thoughts and if not, we can certainly come back to the city council with that information.
Why don't we, oh, yeah, the, uh, the chief just, uh, came online.
I'm sorry, you guys able to hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I think that the communication plan here would mirror, uh, similar initiatives that we've done, uh, or engaged in in the past when we have to communicate any kind of change in law, uh, to our residents, which, uh, as the city attorney has alluded to here, we have not put together that communication plan yet, but I think that you could count on it, including a, uh, integrated plan working with, uh, all the various city entities and leveraging the influence that the police department has developed through various social media channels and other, uh, communication networks to kind of get the word out about this ordinance and the change that's being made to, to existing gun law. As, as the city attorney alluded to as well, and this is largely covered by existing law, um, and common sense and training that people receive when they, uh, obtain their handgun safety certificates. But it is a little bit of a departure in terms of some of the restrictions and, and we will take a really active role in communicating that to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. If, if we need you further, uh, we'll, we'll call on you. Go ahead and mute and take your camera off if you like. Thank you. Next.
Great, thank you. So, um, I'll just go down the, um, the list. Um, the section six point fourteen point oh one oh, this is on, uh, page twenty-two and this is around the juvenile truancy. Um, there's a sentence in there that says, "The city council has determined that there is a high juvenile truancy rate in its schools." Um, I, this is something you're not going to know off the top of your head, but, um, but I am curious to know if this is still true. If, if not, I, I would recommend taking that out. Um, in this section, there's also a section on parental responsibility and since, you know, these juvenile truancy rules have been put in place, there have been a number of studies around, uh, the repercussions and impacts and who these, you know, ordinances impact more, whether it's fair or not. And in particular, the, um, the parental responsibility section, um, both in six point one four point oh five oh and six point one four point oh seven oh, I would just request that they be reviewed, um, because some of this is placing the, um, the fines or the fees on the parents. Um, and then can, can they, can they afford to pay them? And how are they being impacted, uh, compared to other parents, um, who may also not be experiencing obviously the same difficulties, um, with their children if the kids are out and about? Um, there's another penalty under six point one four point oh seven oh that says that if a juvenile has been issued a citation for violation and they fail to appear to the division of the juvenile court, they're automatically reported to the State Department of Motor Vehicles and then have their driver's license suspended. And so I, I don't, I feel like, um, unless, I don't know how the hearings work for the juveniles, but it just seems like one is, one is harsh. I mean, it's like you miss jury duty because you just forgot or because you didn't get the notice or, and all of a sudden your license is suspended. Um, you know, this, I think the, the juvenile should probably have more than one opportunity before they're reported to, uh, the State Department of Motor Vehicles. Um, just going down the, um, six point one four point oh eight oh, um, cost recovery. Um, I, I'm just curious to know if, um, we have ever actually gone after anybody for the juvenile truancy, the time that's spent with the police, it looks like. Um, I don't want to read the whole thing, but just, um, the gist of it is that, you know, the police may have to drive them to and from a location because they're out and about when they shouldn't be. you know, the police may have to drive them to and from a location because they're out and about when they shouldn't be. So I'm just curious to know if this is actually, you know, active? And if not, should we keep it if it, if it hasn't been used?
Councilmember, through the mayor, um, Councilmember Mason, if, if you'd like, we can provide a brief response to that. I know that the chief and I also did, uh, discuss this particular section and he may have some thoughts about the comments that you made.
Yeah, and I, and I should say that thank you for the email. I think it said that there, there's been three cases, but I don't know if any of them have actually been fined the time for the spend. But go ahead, if the chief would like to respond.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I second respond briefly to that. I, I know there was an email response that, yeah, we've had, uh, since two thousand fourteen, three cases in which the police department has enforced a curfew violation on a juvenile. None of those three cases involved violation of the daytime curfew ordinance that's designed to help enforce truancy issues. All of those were nighttime, uh, curfew violation issues. So it, it would go without saying, I think that we have obviously not progressed to the point where we have imposed any kind of cost recovery on those juveniles or their families. Um, because we, we haven't even actually enforced the daytime ordinance anytime since we went to our new record management system back in two thousand fourteen. Uh, I, I wouldn't see that, uh, being something that the police department would, would really engage. And I think as, as we described in the email message response, uh, the reality is that we generally leave truancy issues to the school to manage. And I think that this municipal code is, is really written in there as a tool that, that makes it clear that, uh, police officers can lawfully detain juveniles who are not in school when they're supposed to be so that we can begin that process of getting them to the school and getting the school to handle, uh, discipline internally as they normally do. Uh, the cases that get to the point of us referring something over to the traffic court or to the juvenile criminal system would, would involve, um, you know, extenuating circumstances where we either have a real difficulty where parents are asking for help managing an issue they're having with the child or we're having, uh, in all three of those cases, I can tell you, there were more significant criminal offenses being investigated and, and the curfew violations ended up just being part of the case that was forwarded over. So I hope that provides a little bit of clarity as to kind of the scope we're dealing with in San Bruno and how we manage it at the police department.
Yep. Yeah, thank you. Um, so then, uh, so I understand if we want to keep it as a tool just to have it, but I do think that we should take a look at, a closer look at the, um, fines for parents. Um, and when we actually make a report to the DMV. Um, the next section is the six point two four point oh five oh and six point two four point oh six oh. Uh, maybe it's being the only, uh, female on the council, but I do find it, um, odd that the title of the section refers to female breasts, um, even though there are subsections that deal with, um, like, uh, male genitalia. And so I feel like the title should either strike both, um, or should just be very broad and not refer to either gender. Uh, and maybe just say prohibition against display of private parts or however you want to phrase it. But, um, but I do, it definitely caught my eye that it really focuses on, uh, females. Um, the next section is, uh, six point, um, three, oh, actually, you know, that I don't, that's not a, a change that I'm requesting, so I'll keep going. Um, the next section is page forty-four, six point four eight point zero one zero. I did want to ask if the council has the ability, um, to actually just say after a certain amount of false alarms, there's an automatic fee. Not like none of this, like going back and forth and there's a, um, there's all these, um, requirements, I think, to get there. But can't we just say, like we had with the car company, that, um, one of the car dealerships, you know, over, I don't know, twenty calls in a year, you're going to get charged a thousand bucks every time that there's another false alarm. Um, I think if we have the discretion to do that, we really should consider it. It was such a, such a, um, a big concern for the community. And I think that, um, something like that may actually entice the, um, the dealership to, uh, pay more attention to those false alarms.
Uh, hold on. Would it, would it be easier, because I see Mark's jotting and looking. Mark, did you want to take a couple of those maybe and, and keep us on track? Because I know about false alarms, I, just to be clarity too, when you're answering the council member. Um, you know, there are home alarms and stuff that there is a sequence of so many you can be charged and that has been in process. But why don't you go ahead and then we'll go a couple more questions and come back.
Sure, I'm, I'm very happy to do that. Um, so I think, uh, just quickly going, going back to the question in six point fourteen about the, uh, reporting to the DMV, I think we could easily make a change to that. Uh, the, the section right now says shall report. We can change that to may report. Um, and then I think you've heard how the police will exercise their, their discretion. So that's something where it might address your, um, your comment on that, Councilmember Mason. And then on the adult businesses, I realize sort of what the, uh, lack of clarity was in the actual title. Um, it's, it's, there really should be a comma, um, in, in there. But I, I would agree with you that it would really mean the same thing if we just take out, um, the, if we just leave in private parts, because that, that applies both to men and women. Um, so I think that's, that's an easy change to, to make. And then lastly, on the false alarm, so the, the, the problem that this ordinance is seeking to address is not the, the sounding of a, of an alarm. It's the response by the, uh, police department to a false alarm. That's, that's what it is. So, um, with respect to, to fees and charges, uh, you'll see coming forward in a couple of weeks or maybe a month, the, the city's, uh, fee study that does have additional fees for, uh, these sorts of false alarm responses. But it's, it's not a fee because the alarm is sounding and somebody is, is being affected by that nuisance. It's the, it's the fee for the police department responding.
And can we, can we make that an automatic fee?
Um, well, it, it, I, I believe, and I, I haven't fully, fully read the, the fee study, but I was just scanning it earlier today. Maybe the police chief knows the answer to this offhand, uh, since it was from his department. I know there are fees for a variety of false alarms in that fee schedule for the first one, second one, and so on. I just don't remember the details of that.
I thought there was for, you know, false, uh, you know, you have to go to a complex because the, the, the fire alarm goes off multiple times. And then, and, or a business, and that becomes at some level, then I thought it was in something in the master fee that, that started to trigger that after X number of warnings and being, being.
Right, gracious. Yeah, I mean, normally you, you know, you don't want to necessarily have an automatic fee that the city is required to oppose just when it happens. Um, you, you want to be able to have some discretion to figure out why it happened, what's going on and so on. But it, as I say, there are, there's a, quite a robust system of fees, the master fee schedule.
Ca- Councilmember Mason, um, may I ask you to, to yield, I just saw, or Councilmember Salliser, did you have something on this topic? Or did you?
I did. I had a follow-up question on one of the, one of the ones that was just addressed.
Okay.
Regarding the, um, the reporting to the DMV. And I'm just wondering, uh, it, it was my understanding that once the police issues a citation, it becomes a court issue, then it's up to the court to decide what the penalty, and it's not really, um, up to, I mean, I don't know if we, if we at that point have the ability to limit what the court would, would do or not do.
The court. I, I don't, just to be clear, I'm not asking to limit what the court would do. It's that, it's whether we report, uh, whether we, we report it to the DMV.
But I, I don't even know that a failure to appear would be reported to the police department. Would we know that they didn't appear in court after being issued a citation? Because I know for a lot of things, once, once the police department does their thing, they hand it over to the county to either do prosecution or, or for juvenile cases, it goes to the juvenile court. I'm just wondering, uh, do, how much authority we actually have over that?
Police chief or city attorney?
Maybe I'll defer to the police chief on, on that if he knows and.
Chief Johansson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that, and, and council member, that, that's accurate. Once this case goes over to the traffic court, it would be the, uh, the judge that is making a determination about the penalties and, and if and when to report to the DMV. Uh, we do not at the police department make any reports to the DMV to initiate suspension of licenses under, other than under the admin per se law, which pertains to DUI arrests. So there, there's, there's really no mechanism by which we would, um, request the DMV to suspend a license. That would be done in the punitive phase through the court.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Go ahead, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I think, so with that said, I would go back and just ask to take that, that out. If, if there's no, if it's not even, um, option, so, um. I think the next, um, here, the next section I just wanted to, um, make a suggestion on is the six point five oh, the safe and sane fireworks. Um, there are, so I know that there's so many complaints about fireworks and I, I didn't realize until I read this section that, uh, fireworks are allowed from June twenty-eighth to July fourth. And so I, I would just suggest that, um, they be July third and fourth. Um, I don't know why we need to allow them so many days. So maybe that's a compromise to a lot of the complaints that we have all gotten, I think, li- definitely last year. Um, so that would be a suggested change is to allow them July third and fourth. I don't really see a lot of people using safe and sane fireworks, to be honest, any other days anyway. Um, the, let's see, um, sorry, I've got a bunch of notes. Um, the next section is, oh, um, within that safe and sane, uh, fireworks section as well. Instead of this, um, section C, each violation of this chapter shall also be punishable by civil fine in an amount set forth by the city council resolution. I wanted to ask if we have a resolution and also if it's also possible just to hand out a fine. So if a police goes to your house and you get a citation, you also get a bill that same night.
Well, I'll ask Chief Johansson if he can to, to address that. So we, I, I guess before he does, I'll say that, um, the, the enforcement mechanism here is an administrative fine, not a criminal infraction or misdemeanor.
Yeah, and I, and I have not gotten a citation. Thank, thank you. Um, but I, I think my, my question is more, I'm thinking of like if, you know, I've gotten tickets with my car parked, right? They hand you the ticket and you've got the hundred dollar fine in, in the city. So do you, can, can we do something like that or is it already done? It, can you explain that process when someone cited on Fourth of July, please?
And, and just before the, uh, the police chief is here is, you know, uh, before it used to be where they brought them into the station, processed them, which obviously took a lot longer. So it was then became an administrative citation, which the council took the highest possible amount, which was a thousand dollars. And we were limited. So someone says, why don't you make it five thousand? We can't just arbitrarily do that. But it also then in the field, they do write the citation, uh, hand them to them and obviously then they'll, they'll get the bill, as we call it, and then they have the right for an appeal. But it is a much, uh, a more streamlined process than used to be, and that's why you're seeing them having, uh, more success over the years. Uh, Chief Johansson?
Uh, actually, Mr. Mayor, you pretty much summed it up perfectly. Uh, I think your Fourth of July ride-alongs has paid off. Um, yeah, we do, actually, both are true. We issue an administrative citation, which actually serves as their bill as well. It includes the amount and how to remit payment and all the instructions. So it's really kind of a all-inclusive process. There is some follow-up that is done, I believe, through the clerk's office and finance as far as, you know, collection and possible additional notices if they're not, uh, receiving payment promptly. And there is an appeal process and some other steps. But, uh, the, the sort of shortcut version you're describing, Councilmember Mason, is essentially what happens. The police officer is, is essentially handing them a bill, in essence, at the point of the violation.
Okay, perfect. So then the only suggestion I have there is just to narrow the, the timeframe.
Can, can, on that, because I just, I don't recall this, but, uh, my memory says we used to have a longer duration of days. We shortened it. We also used to have, uh, the hours, which we cut it off sooner as far as sales. Um, and I know the complaints, when you said all the complaints we get, and, and I'm not saying we didn't get complaints this year in other communities, I've spoken to many of the electeds. They were happening way before, like Memorial, uh, Memorial Day. They were happening before the booths even opened or were eligible, and that was illegals, which are illegal. So I, I don't want to preface that if there's, I, I don't know if you were talking about usage or sales, but, uh, I know planes, and that I was hearing, were, were certainly way before the booths opened. But city, city attorney on the duration.
Uh, so I, I do have a memory of that as well. I'm afraid I don't have, um, the, the voter initiative right up in front of me. And I don't know if anybody, uh, remembers exactly what it says. Uh, but the, the city council's ability to, uh, further amend this is somewhat constrained by six point five oh point oh eight zero. Um, and so, you know, really before answering, I need to, to look at that initiative. I don't remember if there's a, if there's a beginning date that's listed in that initiative. If anybody on the call happens to recall that, that, that would be great.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I re- I recall hearing from, uh, our city attorney that we were limited and so we were able to reduce it a little bit. And, and by reducing it much more than that, then we were infringing upon what the voters wanted to legalize fireworks in San Bruno. So we were careful to stay in bounds.
I, I do remember saying that when the issue came up maybe a couple of years back. Um, if during the discussion, I, I can go back and, and look at whenever that staff report was, um, can pull that up. And I know it has the, the text of the ordinance is listed in it, but I'm afraid I don't recall what the year was that, that was done.
Yeah, and I, and I'm looking at just the, um, use. I, I do understand the community's, um, you know, advocacy around the fundraising. I just know that in driving around, I don't see a lot of people using safe and sane fireworks on, you know, a week before. I really do feel like I, you see it really the Fourth of July and maybe if it falls on a weekend, another day. But, um, so I'm just saying maybe that's a, a nice, um, a nice midway point for those who have dogs and are just very concerned oftentimes around their pets. And then those who also are selling for fundraising is just to limit that to really the Fourth of July, which is the holiday. And then, um, okay, so we talked about the penalty. Then for, um, the, this is just a gen- like general, and this is why I'm thinking that we, you might have to take it back. Um, but the chapter six point five two, the tobacco retail, all, pretty much the whole section as it pertains to, um, tobacco cigarette use. Can we add e-cigarettes to that? Because e-cigarettes are now obviously, um, all over. I mean, we had stores right here in downtown.
Yeah, so in the following section, uh, tobacco is also defined as e-cigarettes.
Oh, I mean, okay.
It's in, it's, it's actually defined as smoking or smoke. It's, it's in the, uh, N is in number of the definitions of the very next section, six point five six.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little confusing because we, we adopted that after, you know, the tobacco retailer permit sections were in the code well before six point five six. But, um, it were, it refers to, let me look back up at the front because at the very, very front of the ordinance, it has all the definitions. And I think it refers to the one in six point five six. Let me take a quick look.
Okay, and I can pull it back up again too.
Yeah, I can't find it offhand, but in any event, it, it's defined in six point five six.
Okay, and I'm scrolling up. Okay, and then the, the last, um, question was around the, um, so around the chapter six point five nine and the commercial cannabis activities. I know you had asked, uh, you had asked, um, council for direction in that area. I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, I saw that the zoning went to planning earlier this month and it's going to be coming to council. Is around zoning, and this title that includes commercial cannabis is before us tonight. So it doesn't, I guess it feels like staff is going to be doing double work to make it a, a priority at another time when you're already doing the zoning. The zoning's about to be coming to the council, um, and we're already looking at this title. So, um, I guess I'm trying to understand better why we're, why not, just as a practical matter, why we're not discussing it as the zoning comes to council and this Title VI is coming to council.
Well, you know, it's a good question, Councilmember Mason. I mean, really, we've got the confluence of three things coming to council. The two that you mentioned and plus the, the city council's sort of annual discussion of, of, of goals and priorities. I guess the bottom line is that whether it, whether it's, it's now at this moment or next month. next month, probably doesn't make that much of a difference in terms of what we're doing. The effort will be coordinated irrespective of when it's done, um, both with respect to zoning and with respect to the to the priorities. You know, if if the city council were to tell us tonight, for example, uh, let's not do uh, Title Six, or let's do all of it except for these, and then come back uh, at at the next possible meeting for for these two, we probably wouldn't be back to you for at least a month, if if not, if not a month and a half, because there's that much work that needs to occur um, in order to bring the the cannabis item back to you. From the zoning standpoint, you know, Pamela may have some some thoughts about it. Um, but uh, really there, the question is, in what zoning districts are the, is the city going to allow these activities that are that are currently not allowed? And I I think by the time the zoning is is approved, uh, you know, this this effort may be completed as well. So I guess what I'm saying is kind of a long, roundabout way of saying, we need to, you're right that we need to coordinate those efforts. But I don't think it means doing anything first. I think it means they have to all be done together.
So if if zoning comes to council, um, and the cannabis discussion hasn't been had yet, then is that going to be, that will have to be an amendment to the zoning that will have been brought to us maybe a couple of months earlier? Is that right?
Yeah, that that that's possible. Um, I actually haven't talked with with our director about that yet, but that's something we can certainly discuss and make sure that it's it's coordinated. So that they're coming to you at either the same time or about the same time, or so that we don't have to go back and amend something else because of the the lack of sequence.
City Manager?
Just want to confirm, uh, what we're discussing is potentially advancing uh, the marijuana regulations so that they're sequenced when the other zoning amendments come uh, before the city council. Um, with that, what I would say is that there is a significant work effort to develop those regulations, given where we are now, and the fact that uh, the draft, we've had a consultant working for several months on our zoning ordinance changes. They have already went to uh, the Planning Commission, and will be before the city council, I think, under forty-five days. Um, there's really just not enough time to to do the work. I mean, doing the marijuana regulations uh, is several months. That involves uh, uh, at least three departments uh, outside consultants. And I think just can't be done nor nor in the amount of time that we're already coming back with the zoning ordinance that has already been through uh, the Planning Commission. And it would essentially be delaying that comprehensive update of our zoning for this new add-on uh, that uh, could be a several month uh, project. And so there's, what I would say is that there's nothing wrong with changing your zoning ordinance again. Um, it is a living, uh, breathing, breathing document. And um, should we decide to make any amendment, um, my recommendation would would be that we move forward with the comprehensive amendments that we're already planning for. Uh, we know that there are a number of development projects, uh, and not not just large, but also small projects that can't be done because our code is sometimes uh, inconsistent.
Okay, I'd like to hear what some of the other council members think about, since that was a request of the of the city attorney, um, to determine how what we want to do with that, um, with that particular section. Um, but otherwise, those are my comments. I I don't know what the next steps would be, to be honest, because I don't know if it, the next step is to take it back, to make some of the changes, some of the suggested edits, and then bring it back again, or um, what the council, if the council says, no, we don't want to take any of these suggestions. But I do think especially around the juvenile truancy, we we need to look at some options there around the penalties. Um, and um, I think we should have a conversation, I guess, tonight around what we want to do for next steps with the commercial cannabis, just because, like I said, we're looking at zoning uh, and this title right now. So, thank you.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, City Attorney?
Sorry, just just one comment about about that. Um, the, I think it's important for the council to know that the the vast majority of the zoning changes that are proposed are relating to housing and are are not necessarily related in in to conform the zoning to the transit corridors plan. So they're they're not specifically relating to um, where we should have this this business or that business necessarily, but they are related mostly to housing. Having said that, um, I agree with the city manager that it, uh, we we would, we would likely need to come back and amend the zoning ordinance after a a several month, if not longer, effort. Um, of sort of uninterrupted work on a cannabis in order to to accomplish that.
Yeah, I mean, ju- just for myself, I think the zoning was something we put on strategic initiatives. It is critical. Uh, it has caused delays and other things, um, as for example, in the Mills Park, I mean, we we had to adjust it because the zoning wasn't up current. Um, and so I would hate to see the zoning postponed or delayed uh, for any reason, because I think it's important and a lot of work and time and effort has been placed into that. Um, and I know, um, I think it's not as quick as it sounds. I mean, the cannabis, I know we had a speaker that talked about uh, Burlingame's doing it. I didn't know what that meant, but I I know it's not dispensaries. It is delivery service in a very specified area. So um, I I personally, I don't want to see the zoning uh, uh, stalled or upheld. I think it's a a big thing off our check check list. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina?
Okay, let me take down my hand real quick before I forget it. Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I do agree with you on that point, that this zoning code update has been years uh, in need of being revised. So proceed with that. Um, I understand the cannabis is is a lengthy process. We were told that when we brought forward the uh, taxation of it. And it would have been, it would have been nice to be able to prioritize things a little sooner, but we do have a full plate. And when we get the opportunity as a council to prioritize um, the strategic initiatives and add new initiatives, that that would be one that we need to address at that time. Um, we have a uh, staff has a roadmap of work ahead of them, and uh, I I believe we should allow them to complete this. And we'll, we will address cannabis at our uh, at our initiative meeting.
Councilmember Hamilton?
So, uh, the Vice Mayor said most of what I was going to say. The um, another reason to not delay on the zoning is, um, you know, one of the, one of the complaints that we that we do hear from folks who come to come to San Bruno is how onerous our uh, our processes are. And having the zoning be so complex as it is right now, um, is absolutely contributes to that. So I I am also in favor of, let's get the zoning through, and then we'll go back and and amend it as as needed, um, when we address, when we address the cannabis. I absolutely want to get going on cannabis as soon as possible, but because it's so large, we have to also decide what we're going to not do, um, in order to be able to do that. And that then that's going to happen during the the um, the priority setting. One comment that I would make to to my colleagues here is, you know, scheduling that is proving difficult, and we're, we, it's getting pushed pushed out. Um, I, for the last two rounds of those dates, moved things to make it work. Um, those those dates, and I encourage everybody to do the same, because the the longer we push the priorities down the road, the longer everybody waits on on us making the changes that we need to make here. So I would just a personal plea to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Mason, do you have any other questions or um, on the list?
No, that was it. That was, uh, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yeah. Um, as for uh, Councilmember Mason's uh, concerns about the 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 curfew and the child and the other things, um, perhaps staff could come back with with a recommendation and and a little more thought on on how to maybe get um, to appease uh, Councilmember Mason.
Well, I I mean, as far as like the shall and the may, I think that's that's an easy one.
That's good enough. Okay.
Yeah, I think the city, yeah, the city attorney had made reference about the comma and, you know, uh, being more universal, shall we say?
Yes.
I'm trying to be delicate to the topic. Um, and then I think what it came down to uh, was one about utilizing a tool that hasn't really been utilized, going back to two thousand and fourteen. So what I'd never like to do is take tools away, um, especially, you know, because just like people say about drinking in the park, it's not allowed, but it gives that officer that tool if there's somebody that they spot or there's been a call to utilize it and enforce that. So I, and and again, the city attorney would have to clarify the other particulars. Um, but um, because I, I was writing down, and then to be honest, I lost track a little. So, City Attorney, any thoughts?
So, um, just a, just a couple of thoughts. I think, I think there's a couple of the um, suggestions that we can make without necessarily having to reintroduce the ordinance at a subsequent meeting. Let me just quickly go through those, and then we can talk about the ones that remain. So, uh, the first one uh, was a recommendation to uh, strike in six point five, six point oh four oh, that section, it's in the smoking ordinance. That's the one that says it's not implemented until a later date, and that date is already passed. So we we can certainly make that change. Uh, with respect, then back to a six point one four, with the truancy rate and the penalties, you know, we could certainly take a a much more comprehensive look at that. Um, but I think the the suggestion to um, you know, change shall to may, you know, if that's enough for the city council, then we could certainly do that without reintroducing that ordinance. Six point two four point oh four oh regarding private parts and gender, I think we can easily take care of that as well. Um, again, without having to reintroduce it, that's just changing the title, which doesn't really uh, change the ordinance at all. Um, and then I think really the the remaining two issues that are um, more policy discussions for you are are changing the date. And I've been looking while you've been talking to see if I can find the actual voter initiative. And I'm sorry, I can't locate it. If if anybody can, maybe Melissa, um, or or somebody can locate that, we can take a look at it. I don't know if we can make that change or not. I'd have to bring bring it back in order to answer that question. And then the the final one is, you know, what do we do about cannabis? I think a couple of council members have indicated their thoughts about that. So I think of all the things that has been discussed, the only one that we really need to uh, take a careful look at is either the the truancy one um, and or the fireworks one.
And uh, we, could we go forward and on the fireworks one, make a modification if uh, the majority of the council felt to limit, and again, it's not the sale of, it's the actual dispensing of, meaning utilizing them. Um, can that be done then? And then the second one is on the truancy, which I think um, very quickly, too. I mean, it's not been used in two fourteen, and um, I'm not sure, um, you know what, I'm going to pause because I saw the city manager's hand go up. You're on mute?
Hi, uh, members of the city council and the public, just wanted to apply on potentially changing the dates of fireworks and suggest that if council uh, would like to do that, we do not act on that tonight. Uh, I think the city council would uh, be benefited by a little bit more staff work on that, talking to the nonprofit agencies that utilize revenue from fireworks. Uh, but then also, uh, one thing uh, comes to mind, which is people that are essential workers or actually work, um, uh, their ability to celebrate safe and sane with their families, uh, and not technically break our ordinance, uh, if they they utilize them uh, a few days before, because they're 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 working um, uh, during the third and the fourth. And so I just think, uh, if if you're going down that policy standpoint, um, you benefit from a little bit more analysis.
I appreciate that. But City Manager, I don't know that we need to talk to the fourteen groups. I I think it's a matter of, is it allowed? Do we have that latitude anyway? If the answer is no, point moot. Uh, if the answer is yes, what are they, what are they? And then I do, uh, you bring up a very uh, good point, that some people do work on the holiday. And, you know, so do we deprive them of that? Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
So, um, I I I'm in, I'm in agreement with that. Um, the, and you, the the, of course, now I'm wading into the uh, political third rail of fireworks in San Bruno. But the the um, the sale of safe insane fireworks is, and and the usage of safe and sane fireworks are not, for the vast majority of cases, are not the nuisances that people are reporting. It's the illegals. And the illegals start months, weeks and weeks before the the legal sales of safe and sane fireworks begin and last for weeks after. So I don't necessarily think that that making this change is going to improve anything. Um, I I I, with with that said, if 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 staff wants to do, can do a little bit more study and bring us back some more useful information on it, that's fine. But I wouldn't want to hold up the the passage of of this section for that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Um, uh, City Attorney, are you feeling you're getting enough guidance and that we would be able to go forward with the first reading?
So I think, I think the answer is yes, but I'm I'm not comfortable um, with a, you know, if we can adjust the dates of safe insane fireworks, let's let's do that. I think that's a significant change to the ordinance. Um, and if there's not a majority at the city council that wants to direct us to do that, then absolutely, we can go forward and I think introduce it as is. Uh, I can certainly look at the issue and and bring back some more information on it at a later date. Um, but I, given the controversy that that every year, um, everybody endures as a result of fireworks, I think Councilmember Hamilton and the city manager's comments are are correct in that the changing the dates of of sale of legal fireworks really isn't addressing the the problem that some residents appear to be experiencing. And and so I think that we'll we'll do a lot of research and come to the same conclusion that we've told you before um, about about fireworks. So I don't think there's really going to be any change in in what's in in the problem. So I guess I would, I would recommend that 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 the date not be changed for those reasons, but the city council could certainly direct us to look into it further if if they wish.
Yeah, um, okay, why don't we go around really quickly, because that will determine if we go to the first reading. Um, I believe not at this point, not changing the dates. Staff is not prepared unless they had known about it ahead of time. So I just think, a- and and I think, Mark, you said it well, and I know you're not in San Bruno, but I know your city experienced it, too, because I talked to your mayor. Um, and um, I think it's the illegals. That is the problem we're having. And um, you know, I don't get too many complaints about th- those young people celebrating with the safe and sane. So um, anyway, um, I guess the question would be, do we want to proceed with not changing the dates in in the firework, um, safe insane fireworks, uh, usage dates um, at this time? And proceed, yes or no? Mr. Hamilton?
Uh, no, don't change it. Don't change the dates.
Uh, Ms. Mason, Mrs. Mason, I'm sorry.
Well, I thought, I thought we're looking, nobody knows right now whether the dates can be changed. So it's whether we're directing staff to look into it further, which I would support staff looking into it further. And I didn't propose, I think, uh, City Attorney Zepfano said sale. I'm not proposing any change to the sale. I'm proposing a change to the use of the fireworks, um, to narrow it down. And I would say yes, because we're, I don't know when the last time this title was reviewed. We're reviewing it now. So.
The City Attorney was saying we could go forward and still ask direct staff to check on that caveat. Uh, Councilmember, uh, I'm sorry?
I'm certainly happy to do that.
I saw your head goes down, but you were saying yes.
No, no, sorry. Just just for perspective, I I think implicitly this this chapter is reviewed every single year, um, when, over the Fourth of July, and everybody wrings their hands about what what can we do about it. Um, so I'll just say that it's it's a, everybody knows what it says, I think.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Salazar?
And I know you said yes or no, but I I'll I'll stipulate that I I'm ninety percent sure that the ballot measure did not include any dates, but I'm not comfortable with changing those dates as part of this process. And I I actually think that we should solicit uh, input from And I, I actually think that we should solicit, uh, input from the community before making a change like that. It's, it's become a, a tradition here in San Bruno to do those fireworks. And so if, if we do decide to make that policy change, I think that needs to be part of a, a different discussion. This process of, of cleaning up our municipal code i- has been kind of a routine thing where we're just looking for inconsistencies and making sure that we're lining up with, uh, with state laws and, um, this, this kind of seems like a bigger discussion to me. So I'm going to say, uh, I would like to move forward without changing those dates.
Vice Mayor.
Um, Councilman Salazar brings up a good point. Um, if we said we were going to be changing the hours, there'd be a lot of people here from our groups of people that, uh, do the selling and do enjoy fireworks. So I, I believe we should move forward, uh, with not changing the hours, the dates, and then staff could come back and reduce a review. And, um, I, with memory, my memory serves me right, that's what we did when we reduced the hours of sale, um, Boston, we did it. So, um, that's my point.
I believe you're correct, uh, Vice Mayor. All right. Um, I'm hearing, uh, more than a consensus that to proceed forward at this time with it, the language as is. City attorney, is there anything else that would prohibit us from moving forward?
Uh, no, and I've indicated previously the minor changes that we would, we would include, um, that were discussed by the various council members and we'll, we'll have those in, in the next if it's introduced.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, again, this is an action item. Uh, there is the first item, which would be if, if council wishes to waive the first reading.
So move.
Uh, so, uh, motion by Salazar, second by Vice Mayor. I know you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Did we get public comment?
Um, thank, you know what? Thank you, Vice Mayor. There's not many left, but is there anybody from the public, um, that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Thank you.
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Confirmed. Um, okay, but thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Um, okay, so we had a motion on the floor from Salazar. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor second it. This is on waiving the first reading. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Um, I'm sorry, I, uh, I have a, I have a question. Um, it, it's gonna, because my vote kind of depend, um, depends on it. Is the truancy issue going to come back?
Uh, can, can we maybe just do the waiving of the first reading and then you can vote no on the ordinance if you wish?
Um, well, there are, they're linked, right? The waiving of the first reading and, I mean.
No.
Reactions.
No, I mean, they're, 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 they could come back again, they could come back to us again otherwise, so I.
The waiving of the first reading is just so we don't, the waiving of the first reading is so we don't have to read the document in its entirety, the ordinance, which then I would say on the question, why don't we then go to you to pick thirty on the truancy?
Okay. I'm okay with that. Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. So before we get into, uh, the ordinance, why don't we, uh, have, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mason, a little un, un, untraditional, but let's just do that since it's ten thirty.
I, I do, thank you, Mayor Medina. I just wanted to make sure, so, um, the, the truancy, uh, it, it is going to come back, like, is, is staff going to look into the penalty part and then specifically that sentence, the city council determined that there is a high juvenile truancy rate in its schools? I feel like if we don't have a high tru- truancy rate, it makes our schools look bad, it makes our students look bad. I mean, if that's not true, I want to take that out personally. Um, and I think it's worth it to determine whether that's true and to look at the penalties and, and what other cities have done since these truancy rules came out. Um, but I don't, I'm not sure if that has already, if that's what we're doing or if we're just saying the minor changes of the shall to may is being made tonight and nothing else is going to be looked at and this ends tonight.
Um, I'm going to go, because we have another council member, but I think we all concurred on the shall, I'm sorry, it's the shall, shall de may. And I think that, again, staff doesn't have that information at this time. And again, we can direct them if they had been prepared, maybe we could have hammered all this out tonight, but Mr. Uh, Hamilton, council member.
Um, I would support taking out that, the, the statement that our, that our, uh, schools have lots of truths. Um, it, it doesn't add anything substantive, substantive to the, to the ord, to the ordinances. Uh, so I, I, I have no problem with taking that out.
City Attorney, does this change?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay. Just as long as, wanted to check, we don't have to go backward.
No, you don't. I did have a note to look into that and I'll talk to the police chief about it and report back, uh, when it's adopted. And if it turns out there really is a high rate, I'll tell you that there is and what the data is, and if it turns out there isn't, then we'll remove it.
Well, I appreciate, you already had a note to look into that and bring it further. So are we still okay, folks, uh, with introducing the ordinance as is? Obviously there are two items that the city attorney and or staff will be looking into. Okay. Let's, uh, move on the ordinance, please. Action from council.
I'll make a motion that we introduce the ordinance at the city council, city San Bruno amending and re-adopting Title Six of the San Bruno Municipal Code and amending section one point oh four dot zero two zero, um, with the provisions that were discussed.
I'll second.
Motion made. Thank you. Uh, Hamilton, Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Um, thank you, staff. Thank you all. Um, all right, let's move on to item number seven, comments from council members, and we're going to begin with Councilmember Hamilton, who is going to report out on the twenty twenty one League of California Cities New Mayors and Councilmember Conference held in January of twenty twenty one. And then anything else you'd like to add after that for the evening, sir?
Okay. Um, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief, um, because all of you have been to this training before. Um, it was, uh, so this was the, um, the, uh, annual, um, uh, training and orientation for new mayors and new members of city council throughout California. Um, it was held, uh, instead of in person in Sacramento, it was held, uh, two full days and two half days, um, on Zoom, um, in, in January. Um, I found it very, very valuable, as I'm sure each of you found it when you attended it. Um, the key learnings I took away, I mean, we spent a heck of a lot of time going back over the Brown Act yet again. Um, but still, every time we go over it again, I learned something new, um, about, you know, serial, serial emails and serial meetings. There was a lot of discuss about, discussion about that and falling into those traps. Um, and a lot of talk about social media usage and the new, and the new, um, laws that, that came up. Um, thankfully, I, I have had a, uh, I had a leg up on that one because of the, um, presentations that we got from our city attorney. Um, I also learned, um, a lot about how to advocate for San Bruno with the, the regional and state entities that were, that were members of. So that was, um, that was a, a big takeaway. Um, the finance session was very intense and very overwhelming. I'll be referring back to those materials often. I am absolutely not an expert on finance after that because it was a fire hose of information, um, very, very, uh, complicated. Um, but it was nice to know that, that after that was over, the comments from everybody else was, were echoing mine, so I didn't feel left out. Um, the only real negative was that there was very limited, um, opportunities to network. And, um, you know, I'm sure like each of you were able to, to, um, you know, network and find folks, um, in, in, with similarly, similar sized cities across the state to, um, to connect with. And they tried their best to do that, but it's, it's Zoom, so there's only so much you can do and it is what it is. So, um, so that, that is my report. I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any. I doubt they would. Um, so that's it. And then, um, the only other comment that I had, um, is regarding, uh, you know, we've, we've gotten, we've gotten underway with the, um, the Clean, Clean San Bruno Subcommittee. Um, and, but I will defer to the, our Vice Mayor to report out on.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mason, any comments?
Um, I would just say that in driving around the city, it feels like, um, people forgot that COVID is here. And so just a reminder to everybody that people are still dying and are, you know, people are still in the hospital. Um, I, you know, know somebody whose wife is still in intensive care right now. Um, and so just a reminder, wear your masks and if you're going to go out and eat, you know, just still stick within your bubble because once you take off your mask, you can still get other people sick. So that, that's about it. Just a reminder that we are still in a shelter in place order, like the state has not lifted this, the shelter in place order, and we really should all still be following the mask ordinance and the social distancing and washing of hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Yes, sir. Uh, okay, so it's basically, wanted to say that, uh, the Clean San Bruno Action Committee is, is, uh, been active. Um, we are going to have a Zoom meeting on this Saturday, so people keep your eyes peeled for social media posts and we'll be sharing with staff the Zoom, um, Zoom, Zoom meeting information for this Saturday, February thirteenth, ten AM to eleven AM. We're going to stick to one hour meetings. Um, anything more than an hour, people are ready to get out. And, um, I would encourage our residents that you don't have to wait for an organized cleanup. Uh, there, there are members of our community that are doing that now, taking care of their street or taking care of a street that they pass by that they're just tired of looking at with litter around it. Um, and I, I want to echo what, what, uh, Councilmember Mason said, you know, COVID is still here. Uh, I, my sister's coworker, their whole family got it and one of their members isn't going to make it. It's been in ICU for a month and it's just devastating. So, um, just be safe. We've got this far and we just need to go a few months longer hopefully and, uh, just be safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Salazar.
Um, I'll, I'll echo what, uh, what Linda and Marty said, you know, I, I know we're all frustrated with, with sheltering in place and not being able to do things we used to do. We're all looking forward to being done with this, but just little things, you know, just wearing the mask, social distancing, they're, they're small sacrifices, um, and they'll keep us all safe, uh, not, not just ourselves, but those around us. Uh, and, uh, so let's just hang in there. Um, we can do it. We're, uh, we're definitely seeing some light at the end of the tunnel, so let's, let's all hang in there.
Thank you. Um, for me, a couple of things. First, I, just FYI to council, I have reached out and, uh, through the principal of Cappuccino and he has reached out to the, uh, faculty advisor, to the, uh, CAF Environmental Club, and I've offered to, uh, zoom in and speak with them at their next upcoming meeting. So that is in the works as of tonight, uh, just to kind of do that and maybe I have a little soft spot for CAF for some reason. Um, also, um, I wanted to, um, adjourn tonight and just, and, and, um, you know, it's been tough times and it's also important and, and that we have individuals that, uh, we have lost, uh, but it's come to my attention that there are, are two folks. You have, uh, Luis Ducci, who was a sixty year resident as well as a county resident, of course, of San Mateo, which was Angelo Adiego's mother. And if you remember her, she was principal at, uh, uh, Parkside, Bel Air, she worked at St. Roberts. So I'd like for us to adjourn in her memory. In addition, I would also like, um, to, uh, Marilyn Rosekind. Marilyn Rosekind also, uh, lived in San Bruno and if you might remember, her son is Mark Rosekind, who was the NTSB, uh, gentleman, uh, that actually, uh, worked on the San Bruno Pipeline Explosion. Uh, he graduated from Crestmore. So these are folks that have, uh, roots in our community and want to acknowledge them for that. I also wanted then, on a third note, take this opportunity since we're talking about, um, folks and, uh, folks that have been in our community and as well as, uh, Mark and Angela's, uh, mother, but is also to take a moment for those that have lost, uh, a loved one, or let's say specifically in this case, uh, their mother this year or last year, that we also, uh, take a moment for them as well. So for all three of those, I will ask that we take just a moment and we will adjourn in all their memories. Thank you, council, very much. Thank you, staff, very much. We're going to have a adjournment to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on February twenty third, twenty twenty one at seven PM, as, uh, was already indicated. Please stay strong, stay safe, and we'll see you then. Enjoy.